Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is July 26, 2017. We're holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, thank you for coming today. Our order of business will include the election of the President and Vice President, Honoring Excellence, our CEO report, followed by public participation, then we'll go into executive session, and then return to start our voting process. As I ask at every board meeting, continue courteous and thoughtful behavior is very much appreciated. Also, we have, when I walked through the hall, I saw a number of kids in the room next door. So just remember that everything we do here is not only just televised by the media, the major media, but it's televised internally, and all of these meetings are viewed by a great many people. Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, July 26, 2017, is hereby called order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Rivera.
Here.
Member, Vice President Guzman.
Here.
Member Dr. Hines.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
President Clark.
Here.
Five members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our CEO, Ronald Marmar, our General Counsel, Dr. Janice Jackson, our Chief Education Officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Guzman, do we have a motion?
Yes. I move that the board-elect Frank M. Clark to the office of the President of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago.
May we have a second?
Okay, I second the motion. I may not even vote for him.
Thank you, Dr. Hines. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President, I'm sorry, Member Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And Member Clark.
Do I vote for myself?
Yes, sir. Five i's, zero n's. Mr. President, congratulations to Frank Clark, the President of the Chicago Board of Education. And, Mr. President, we will now proceed with the election of the Vice President.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. I move the board-elect Jaime Guzman to the office of the Vice President of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
We have five i's, zero n's. Congratulations to Jaime Guzman, the Vice President of the Chicago Board of Education.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Dr. Jackson, we will proceed with honor and excellence.
Good morning, President Clark and other board members. As you know, we begin each Board of Education meeting by acknowledging the accomplishments of our students and school communities. Today, we are welcoming nine students, all of whom are Dreamers, and we'll give them an opportunity to come in so I can tell you a little bit more about their story and the importance of the Chicago Public Schools Dreamer Scholarship Fund. Today, we are thrilled to acknowledge six CPS students who are recipients from this year's Dream Fund Scholarship, as well as three graduates from 2016 who will be receiving a renewal scholarship this year. These students come to the United States from Mexico, Guatemala, Poland, Mali, in Mali when they were very young. They've done exceptional work. They stand out as scholars in our district, but because of their undocumented status, that presents huge obstacles when they start to think about their post-secondary options. As many of you know, Dreamers are not eligible for federal financial aid, nor are they able to apply for MAP grants provided by the state of Illinois. And in some cases, private scholarships are also off limits as well, which can put a halt on dreams for students like Edgar, Letitia, Kamisa, Caesar, Sylvia, and Denson, who are all here today. We are so happy that you are here today. I had an opportunity to read all of your scholarship essays, and I have to say, and I'm always impressed with the resilience and perseverance of students here in CPS. And, you know, many of us can't say that we could survive, given some of the obstacles that many of you are able to survive and do remarkably well. Finally, I want to acknowledge the students who will be receiving the Renewal Scholarship. That is Crystal, Mahome, and Walmer, sorry. The Renewal Scholars are students who are being recognized today. They received it, as stated earlier last year, and because of their impressive academic performance in college, they will be recipients again. We hope that these students serve as motivators for other CPS employees and community partners to contribute, to continue to contribute to the Dreamers Fund. Each year, this scholarship fund is led by CPS employees who are really committed to this work, and each year, the amount of donations continues to grow, and we hope to see more and more because it really is life-changing for so many of our students. But we're going to allow a few of the students to address the board today, to really talk about how important this scholarship is and what it means for their post-secondary career.
Thank you. Good morning. I do have a little something prepared. Looking for scholarships as an undocumented student is an endless disappointment. It often seems that every scholarship has that dreaded citizenship requirement. So I'd like to thank Mauricia Boyd for thinking about the always-forgotten Dreamer population.
So I wanted to talk about, a little bit about what type of students we are. We are the type of students who are the shining stars. I was valedictorian at my school. I was in NHS. I was in everything that I could have been. I had a 4.7 GPA. I was the ideal student, the ideal student, and the only difference between me and all of these other students was basically my status. So when it came time to apply to scholarships and to schools, between junior and senior year, I applied to more than 18 schools. I got accepted to all of them. I also won the Posse Scholarship, but sadly, I was not able to attend due to the fact that they only cover tuition, and as you do have to go to an out-of-state school, room and board can be a huge issue. And there was really nowhere for me to find that money. Finally, out of all the schools that I had been accepted to, I found one near me, you know, so I could commute to make it a little bit easier. And the very next day, I actually had my interview for the CPS Dream Fund Scholarship. So I was still very worried about the cost of everything, you know, and when I met Marcia and Louis, because they were my interviewers, they made me feel like I could really do this. And I won the scholarship, this is actually my second renewal since I've been with them, but the scholarship has made me be able to be in school continuously because so often you feel like drowned because you can't find money. You're constantly working and, you know, going to school. I would go to school Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then work Tuesday, Thursday, the weekend, and then whenever I got out of school early. So it makes it a little bit harder, but scholarships like these, like the CPS Dream Fund, are helping make our dreams come true. I know with Marcia, she doesn't just give us the scholarship. You know, she follows us and, you know, makes sure that if there's anything else she can help us with, she does. And we have become kind of like a connected group because we all try to help each other out and make sure that if there's any information we need, we can help each other out. But I'd like to say thank you to all of you and anybody who has donated to our scholarship because we are real faces and we are real people who do have dreams and who can do it. So, thank you.
Before you step away, first of all, just again, I want to say that you guys represent the best in CPS, and it should never be a case that money or status gets in the way of you pursuing your dream. So thank you for being unafraid to tell your story publicly and help us raise awareness about this critically important issue. And thank you for acknowledging Marcia, board worked a long time at CPS and actually created a strong infrastructure for scholarship acquisition for students across the board. So glad to see you're here. I know we're going to continue to raise more and more money with you at the helm. I'll turn it over and see if any board members would like to address our students that are present here today.
Yeah, I would. First of all, there's so much to say, I just want to say thank you for being here today. Your success is CPS's success, and everything that you've achieved today, you've earned through a lot of hard work and sacrifice, and I just want to thank you for that. The other thing I want to say is just, especially today, it's really important for us to hear your voices and for society at large to hear your voices. So I just, again, want to doubly thank you for being here today because it's important not just for us to hear this story, but for, as President Clark said, folks watching to hear these stories. And I just encourage you to be active and vocal on your campuses as well because I think it's important, again, now more than ever, that we know that you're here and that you're fighting really hard and accomplishing amazing things. So I just want to thank you all individually for being here.
Thank you.
I mean, I just want to take a moment. I think getting into college is hard enough, let alone with all the obstacles that you've had to deal with, and I just commend you for everything that you've done. And I think equally, if not more importantly, the fact that you're getting where you are, but then reaching back and working, establishing this website, working with other students in similar situations, is just a testament to your character, and I wish you all the best of luck.
And I want to just say, congratulations to Marcia. She started this a long time ago with the board, and I want her to continue the good work because I'm sure these students would not be here with these scholarships without her. So thank you so much, Marcia, and congratulations to each of you.
One, I believe, last comment. It's interesting to note, and I say this for you, but I also said for the media, Dreamers are black, brown, and white. I don't think that's commonly understood, and you demonstrate that fairly, very clearly. You're not alone in your efforts. The mayor, the city has taken a very public and strong supportive position, and corporate leaders like John Rowe, who I've worked with for many years, this is one of his, I think his biggest issue in supporting you and your efforts. And then you do yourselves so much good by doing so well and demonstrating such excellence. So you have a lot of support. You're going to all do very well. The legal issues will take care of themselves. They may be a bit confusing sometimes, things at the highest level of government can appear confusing because they are, but they straighten themselves out over time. So we wish you all the very best, but you're doing so much for yourselves. You're going to succeed. Thank you very much.
All right, let's give them a big round of applause. All right. You're dismissed. All right. I will turn it over to CEO Forrest Claypool for the CEO's report.
Thank you, Janice. As many of you know, Springfield will soon decide the fate of Senate Bill 1. After decades of talk, the General Assembly has finally reformed the broken system of funding education. Everyone will eventually gain under this bill, but schools with the high numbers of low-income children will gain the most. Senate Bill 1 would begin to slowly lift Illinois from the bottom of states in the nation, 50 out of 50th, in reflecting the higher costs of educating children living in poverty. Senate Bill 1 is not, however, a panacea for CPS. It reduces but does not close the gap between CPS and the remainder of the state. As the Chicago Tribune recently reported, CPS is 19% of the children but receives only 15% of state dollars. Under Senate Bill 1, our share would go from 15% to 16% this year. That's progress, but hardly a CPS bailout, as the governor likes to say. The governor is shamelessly pitting one part of the state against another, an old and discredited tactic, substituting demagogery for thoughtful leadership. All children in our state are deserving, white, brown, black, urban, suburban, rural, rich, and poor. We need our leaders to put all of Illinois's children first. The bill would help underfunded districts throughout Illinois, particularly in downstate communities, and 268 districts would do better than CPS in increased per pupil funding. By dividing the state region against region and playing the regrettable dog whistle politics of race, the governor and his surrogates are placing their own politics ahead of their responsibilities to the children of Illinois. But don't take it from me, listen to the voices of hundreds of Illinois school superintendents who are united in their call for Governor Reiner to sign Senate Bill 1. From Brian Harris, the superintendent of Barrington Schools, quote, "No district loses money. I can tell you from my district's perspective in particular, it was important for us to make sure there was no Robin Hood scenario going on." From Lori LaQuatt, a regional superintendent in southern Illinois, "The SB 1 funding formula will be greatly beneficial for school districts in southern Illinois." From former Rochester superintendent Bruce Hayes, "It's an issue where morally we should be supporting every student in this state, not just those who have adequate funding in their local districts." School superintendents from Quincy, Pena, Rockford, Peoria, and so many other cities support this historic legislation because they understand that it benefits all Illinois students, not just those living in Chicago. Only Governor Reiner stands in the schoolhouse door, blocking progress. As school leaders united throughout the state, we call on him once again to sign Senate Bill 1. Finally, I have a bittersweet announcement to make. Our chief operating officer, Denise Little, will be starting the next phase of her life, retirement. Although I'm pleased to say she will continue to help us part-time as we struggle to transition from her irreplaceable leadership. I have never met a leader in any vocation who's so universally respected. Denise commands any room she enters.
That is...
I'm sorry.
Wow, that's so nice.
Takes charge in any situation, and always delivers results. As network chief, she presided over the fastest academic gains in memory. As chief operating officer, she helped stabilize the district and make it more efficiently. More importantly, Denise brought together the often disparate cultures of operations and education and made them work effectively together, no easy feat. And all the while, she kept the interests of children first. No meeting went by without Denise asking, are we doing what's best for children? I want to thank Denise from the bottom of my heart for her wisdom, her passion, and her fierce advocacy for children. And to make it more official, the board would like to issue a proclamation on Denise's half. So I will hand things over to President Frank Clark.
Thank you very much, Forrest. I heard a few comments in the back. I think they were nice. Someone said, oh, he has a heart.
You know what?
Then I immediately started thinking about the Wizard of Oz. Who was it that needed a heart in the Wizard of Oz?
Tin Man.
The Tin Man. Well, I don't know. That was unkind, but I'll stay with the nice part. Yes, he does have a heart, and he also has done an outstanding job. I'm going to read the proclamation for Denise Little. Denise, when they gave this to me, they didn't know that they needed to have everything in large type, but I think I'll get through it. Whereas, after serving the Chicago Public Schools for 44 years with faithful service and dedication, Denise J. Little will retire from the Chicago Public Schools. And whereas, at the time of her retirement, Denise Little was chief operating officer of CPS, a $5.6 billion organization with 43,000 employees. And whereas, Denise Little has served as senior advisor to the CEO, chief of network support, chief of schools, principal, assistant principal, and teacher, and probably janitor. And whereas, as chief of network support, Denise Little helped drive unprecedented academic gangs among district schools. And whereas, Denise Little is a product of the Chicago Public Schools, so has a personal connection to the success of our city's children. And whereas, in all of her roles with Chicago Public Schools, Denise Little sought to hold schools accountable for maintaining high standards and implementing a strong instructional program that prepares all students for success in college, career, and community. And whereas, Denise Little commanded universal respect from those who knew her or of her. And whereas, throughout her career with Chicago Public Schools, Denise Little looked at students through both the caring lens of a parent and the professional lens of an educator, serving as an advocate who would help them be successful no matter what the obstacles. And whereas, Denise Little will be remembered as an educator who was passionate about children, who spoke for those students and families who did not have a voice, and who believed that students can and would meet and exceed expectations that were set forth for them. And whereas, Denise Little will be greatly missed by colleagues and friends at the Chicago Public Schools. And now, therefore, be and proclaim that we, the board presidents and members of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, this 26th day of July 2017, do hereby extend to Denise J. Little our heartiest congratulations upon her retirement and offer our gratitude for her contribution to the education of Chicago's childrens. And Denise, I can't add to those wonderful words that were written about you. In the time that I spent with you, I found your knowledge, your professionalism, your commitment, your compassion, your concern for the Chicago Public School system as a whole, and for the children that we teach in particular, is nothing short of outstanding. Words really don't demonstrate the full measure of your contribution. To say you will be missed is an understatement. Forrest is smart enough to work out something so you don't completely get away. The respect that I have for you and the board and people in the audience is immeasurable. Thank you so very much, and if you would like to say something, please do so.
First thing I'm going to say is that I'm proud to be a product of Chicago Public I want to thank all the teachers who poured into me, and I want to thank the teachers for the hard work that they do every day with our children, to pour into them. When I decided to become a teacher, I wanted to come back and give back to the community. I am so proud of the continuous improvement of Chicago Public Schools and the academic success, and our children continue to amaze me every day. It has been both an honor and a privilege to work in this system for 38 years with some of the most amazing and committed administrators. Forrest Claypool, I don't care what anybody says, I love you too, and I will always have your back because I know you have a heart for children. I want to leave a legacy of excellence, and even though, as I retire, I will always be the greatest cheerleader for the Chicago Public Schools, and I will continue to be an advocate for children for the rest of my days. Thank you so much for allowing me to...
Thank you very much. That concludes...
All right. I don't want to say anything because everybody knows I'm going to start crying as well. You know, again, just thanking Denise from the bottom of my heart. I mean, everything has already been said about your reputation, but I think there are two things that were not acknowledged today that I think people need to know about you. Number one is that Denise comes from a family of educators, and I think that, you know, she has a lot of natural strengths and other strengths that were honed over time, but I think her love for education and her understanding of the value of public education comes from, you know, her family. Your mom was a teacher, siblings are teachers, several aunts, et cetera. And that love and that passion is something that we both share and something that I've always admired in you. The second thing or other connection we have is that you are a woman of God, and I believe that every decision that you make is guided by that. And I want to thank you for being a partner and trying to protect the integrity of this organization because it's so critically needed. And, you know, we can talk about the gains, the respect, and all the other things, but the thing I admire most about you is that you care about children, you care about this district, and you care about integrity, and those are the things that we align on. So I know you're going off to retire and happy that you can still boss all of us around, but you don't have to come in every day, and I'd gladly be waiting for that moment. So thank you, and I hope you enjoy retirement and have as much fun, the amount of fun that you have should match the amount of work that you've done in this district because nobody works as hard as you do. So, thank you. Just one last quick announcement before we finish with the rest of the proceedings today, and that is just a quick update for the board and the public on the Go CPS initiative. For those of you who are unaware, that initiative is our effort to streamline the high school application process. I'm happy to report today that every charter campus and every network in the district has agreed to sign on. People remember back in April when we made this announcement, obviously, it would be mandatory for all district schools, but we worked in collaboration with Charter School Networks, INX, et cetera, to ensure that every school participated. The reason behind this is, one, it speaks to equity, and you can't have an equitable system if everyone isn't involved. It also will increase transparency around the enrollment process for all schools, but more importantly, which was the number-one reason why we did this, is that it will give families a one-stop shop for all high school options, which will make the process much more simple. I think that's critically important. We want to get away from a system where people benefit because of their ability to negotiate a complicated system and instead make it more easy and accessible for all students and families. We are also excited about the interest in Go CPS and the support that we've received from so many principals and counselors, in particular, our elementary school counselors. As I stated before, when we made this announcement around simplifying the process, I got a thunderous applause and in some cases, a standing ovation, and especially for the people in this room today, you know that we don't get those very often. I think it speaks to the notion that counselors, they have a lot of work to do, and so they don't have to spend time navigating 150 different application processes and various deadlines. They have one place to go, which means they will have more time to work with students on the high school exploration process, which was something that we instituted in this process. So earlier this, back at the end of the school year, we started our subscription campaign. We had over 24,000 parents, students, and families sign up and subscribe to Go CPS. We intentionally targeted seventh-grade students who are going to eighth grade, and we spent time passing out information and sending updates so that they can explore the various choices for high school. The next phase for families will come in August when students can begin activating their accounts. This means that they can create their profiles and see which programs they are eligible to apply to, manage those various applications over the next several months. The other thing that's important to note is that all applications will be housed on the Go CPS website. We will also have paper applications to assist families during this transition and make sure that no family is prevented from applying for school due to limited access to technology. As we move forward, we invite all of you, all of those who are interested and want to learn more about Go CPS, to visit our website at go.cps.edu. There, you can subscribe and receive email updates from our Office of Access and Enrollment. It is also a landing page to share your questions, comments, and additional feedback on this process. Again, we thank you for your interest in Go CPS and look forward to continuous updates around the application process and increasing student access to our high-performing schools. President Clark, that concludes the CEO report.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Board members, any questions? Okay. With that, I only have one announcement to make, and it's the same one I make at every meeting, to encourage you to use the board website, CBSBOE.org. It is, I think, a very useful way to reach out to the board in between meetings. It's also a very good way to get issues resolved in a timely fashion. And with that, Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, August 23, 2017, at the CPS Loop Office. Advanced registration will open at 10:30 a.m. Monday, August 21, 2017, and will close on Tuesday, August 22, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to proceed with today's public participation session. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with a board office staff member, and Eric is here to assist. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for speakers to see. take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as a railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you.
Before we start our public participation today, as you all know, we allow some latitude for our elected officials, and that's the appropriate thing to do. For all the other participants, the two-minute timeline is something I'd really ask today in particular that you adhere to and allow everyone to get their time and not run over. And with that, would you please start?
Thank you, Mr. President. So our first speaker, Mr. President, will be Troy LaRiviere, please. He's the president of the CPAA. And then we will proceed with the speakers list.
Good morning, members of the board and the beautiful people of Chicago. Last year, in response to the mayor's office and its demands for more school budget cutting, CPS officials systematically underfunded special education programs and then told principals to fund the unmet special education need by cutting staff in their general education programs. Basically, they used the underfunding of special ed as a way to force principals to understaff general ed. These officials put a cumbersome funding appeals process in place for principals who had both the time, resources, and the courage to question their inadequate allocations. 158 principals filed appeals, and the results of that appeals process was racially discriminatory to a degree that is flagrant and nauseating. Those 158 schools asked for more than $24 million but received less than $3.5 million. More than 85% of the expressed need went ignored. But what happened to that $3.5 million? What schools got it? Was it distributed fairly or was it funneled to a subset of schools that served a particular type of student body? We don't have to guess. We know the answer to that because after the Chicago Principals and Administrators Association last appeared before this board expressing our preliminary findings on this very issue, journalist Sarah Karp filed a Freedom of Information Act request and got the results of that appeals process. However, the data filed, the CPS released, did not contain information about the race of the students in the schools that were approved and denied. So after Ms. Karp made the data publicly available, our association used other data to fill in the missing data on racial composition of each school. This is what we found. In terms of the requested need met, schools that serve majority white students got 60% of the amount they requested on average. Schools that serve majority Hispanic students got 14% of the amount they requested on average. And Mr. Claypool, would you care to guess what schools that serve majority African-American students got? I'll remind you that majority white schools got 60% of what they asked for. Since you blame the state quite a bit for racial discriminatory funding, would you care to guess on average what majority black schools got when white ones got 60%? The answer is 9%. Just as disturbing, one can virtually predict how much funding a school got by virtue of how many white students were enrolled at the school. Of the 158 schools that appealed, the 10 with the highest percentage of white students receives more than $1 million from this tainted appeals process. Over 1 million. That was for the schools that serve the most white students. Mr. Claypool, would you care to guess how much the schools got? The 10 schools that serve the kids with the fewest white students and the most black ones? 1 million to what? The answer would be zero, sir. In a state, if the state, as Mr. Claypool claims, puts black and brown children on the back of the education funding bus, then you, Mr. Claypool, your mayor, and this board have kicked black and brown children off the bus entirely and declared, "Let them walk. Let them walk." As CPS prepares today to announce yet another appeals process, principals, teachers, and families must be made aware of the inhumane manner in which this district treated black and brown children in this same process last year and fight this year's negative decisions at every turn and with everything they have. There are additional things that we've come together, that we have to come together to force this district to do. And those things will come out with our report in the coming weeks. But we feel that as an association that this data does not belong to us. It belongs to all of you. And the responsibility for addressing it belongs to all of us and all of you. So we've been meeting behind the scenes with more than 30 organizations and will continue to do so to plan our response to the crimes committed against God's children by members of this board and your designees. We've been meeting with organizations, about 30 different ones, from Raise Your Hand, Brighton Park Neighborhood Council, Logan Square Neighborhood Association, the Urban League Action Now, and three attorneys from the U.S. Department of Justice, who are conducting some preliminary data gathering as we speak. All of this is happening in the context, I have to say, of the third attempt this year to shut down a high-performing majority black school. First, the mayor's office went after Kellaw. Then they went after Field. And now they're going after NTA. Three attempts in one year to shut down Level 1 or higher majority black schools. When has this district ever attempted to shut down three majority white schools in a year? In a decade? In a century? Never. But one year, three have been targeted by the administration that appointed you all, and one is going to finally make its way for your consideration. I say that given the findings that we have, that this board has to declare itself unfit to make such a decision. This happened on your watch, and what I've said here is confirmed. I suggest that you, Mr. Clark, and I say this with all due respect, I suggest that when these findings are confirmed, this happened on your watch, that you do the dignified thing and resign. And I suggest that all of you consider, and that goes doubly for you, Mr. Claypool. And Ms. Jackson, we love you. Our principals love you. They're very disappointed because you were one of us. You know what it's like to attempt to take our kids and help them reach their potential without the resource to do so, and yet you allow yourself to be used by this board to make excuses for, to explain away and justify things that are inexcusable, inexplainable, and unjustifiable. At some point, when are you going to leave this cesspool and come back home? Come back home, sister. You all will hear from us again soon.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we'll continue with the speakers list, and our next speaker will be Speaker number two, please, Wendy Miller, followed by Speaker number eight, Nadia Mohairier, Speaker 12, Tim Jones, Speaker 28, Vanessa Mayer, and Speaker 29, Troy Speaker number two, please, Wendy Miller. Last call. Please state your name.
My name is Wendy Miller, and I live in the South Loop. I have twin daughters who have attended both South Loop Elementary and National Teachers Academy. I am disappointed by the lack of transparency of this entire process and offended by the proposal to destroy a high-performing elementary school. Dr. Jackson and Alderman Dowell continue to say that this process was transparent and inclusive. I'm here to tell you that it was anything but that. The first time we learned about any potential change to NTA was at a March 2017 meeting at Alderman Dowell's office, which a parent leader requested to address rumors about a potential boundary change. No parent asked about a high school proposal. Alderman Dowell had the opportunity to share the proposal, but she did not. She did not confirm or deny the boundary change, simply saying that NTA would have to prove why they deserved to exist. The next month, at her April 2017 Town Hall, Alderman Dowell stated that NTA was not a topic for the evening. Again, she had the opportunity to share information, but she did not. Instead, an NTA parent stood up and asked Dr. Jackson if CPS was discussing a boundary change. She confirmed that they were, but did not mention a high school proposal. Parents finally confirmed CPS intentions to turn NTA into a high school through a Crane's breaking news alert on June 6, the day of the first CPS Town Hall. NTA has had to ask for every instance of community engagement, and while they begged to be heard, our leaders have actively solicited feedback and support from groups like the Prairie District Neighborhood Alliance, South Loop Elementary, and the Chinatown Coalition for months, or in some cases, years. Insiders have disclosed to NTA that CPS and the mayor's office have repeatedly referenced that this plan was a done deal before NTA was told about it. If you started with a fair and inclusive community process, you would have anticipated all the problems in this proposal, like how parents react to the idea of a 1,900-student elementary school where children like mine, who have IEPs for physical or learning disabilities, will fall through the cracks. We have over 8,700 new homes coming to the South Loop. We need two high-performing elementary schools to meet that demand. I would like to stand with NTA community and Chicagoans United for Equity in calling for a pause to this plan. We cannot sacrifice a successful school, and we must find a viable alternative.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please, Nadia Mohair.
I'm Nadia Mohair. I oppose the CPS plan to close NTA and convert it to a high school to address the lack of quality high school seats when nearby Phillips, Dunbar, and Tilden High Schools already exist with 4,500 vacant seats. This current proposal is not cost-efficient, nor does it promote integration. Rather, it emphasizes the segregation of existing schools. What makes a Level 1 school that is also integrated? Just a few years ago, NTA was a Level 3 school, and now it's a Level 1+. How did this happen? Well, with a highly qualified and competent administration faculty that caters to the specific needs of the school's students, a strong parent community, resources like the Park District and Community Clinic, and the addition of the RGC brought the school to the attention of families that may not have considered it before and further integrated and strengthened the NTA community. So in thinking about increasing the number of quality high school seats for the greater South Loop and Chinatown communities, and while still serving the needs of the students already enrolled in the local high schools, I ask, will a new 1,000-seat building really serve their needs any better than the existing 4,500 vacant seats? What if CPS added an excellent ESL program and bilingual education at one of these schools, like Kelly High School has been offering to its students from Chinatown for decades? Or why not add an IB or STEM partnership with IIT to these underutilized schools, invest in the teachers and administrations to make the schools more attractive? We need a plan that invests quality programming at the existing schools that lifts up the academic profiles of the students already there while also meeting the needs of the new student populations that will attend. We don't just need more air conditioning units, and certainly not new buildings that cost a cash-strapped district hundreds of millions of dollars in long-term debt and crushing interest. Our children deserve a better plan. Chicago deserves a better plan. I stand today with the NTA community and Chicagoans United for Equity in calling for a pause for this plan because this proposal should not move forward without an independent equity analysis and a community-led process.
Thank you, Ms. Mohair. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker 12, Tim Jones.
I think it's time that we not see these kids as kids, but as caterpillars. See them as something at their early stages of development. Now, we all know the end result is a beautiful, peculiar butterfly. Despite this, caterpillars go through a lot during their maturation process to become beautiful, peculiar butterflies. Now, as most people know, caterpillars are short, stubby, and have no wings at all. Within the third of the four stages, the old body parts of the caterpillars undergo a remarkable transformation called metamorphosis to become the beautiful parts that make up the butterfly. The kids at National Teachers Academy are an amazing reflection of a caterpillar. They have gone and grown through a lot. They have gone from Level 3 rating to a Level 1 rating, and are as close to a Level 1+ rating. There is a metamorphosis taking place at 22nd and Sirmack. Their short, stubby inabilities are no more. If this school is closed, the beautiful parts that make up these children won't emerge, and I'm afraid that the world may never see their beauty. I would like to stand with the NTA community and the Chicagoans United for Equity in calling for a pause to this plan because the proposal should not move forward without an independent equity analysis and a community-led process. We cannot sacrifice a successful school, and we must find a viable alternative to closing down this beautiful, black, resilient school.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 28, Vanessa Mayer.
Along with all other NTA students, my daughter Zoe develops her academic and interpersonal skills through creative, individualized methods that NTA staff have developed. For example, she's enjoyed a mentorship or buddy program, which promotes interaction between different grade levels. As a rising third grader, she has reciprocated and stretched her skills towards knowledge sharing and listening to younger students. These soft skills exercised in an elementary setting prepare NTA students to become leaders. She has also learned from efforts by NTA staff and families who amid budget constraints have achieved numerous grants, awards, and local community support to ensure NTA's success academically and as a community. If CPS moves forward with this proposal, the new elementary school will become too large for these individualized interactions, which will dampen both NTA and South Loop student development. Separating elementary grades on two or three different campuses will make programs logistically difficult to mix differing age groups. How would my daughter meet a seventh grader and learn about his or her experiences preparing for high school? Walking through the NTA halls and running into an older student inspires Zoe to explore what she could become and what she could do, soccer, art, cheer. While the new facility may be nice, it is not just capital improvements that make a school worthwhile. It's the daily interactions with NT staff and students that make NTA's community worth protecting. CPS's three commitments to Chicago children are academic progress, financial stability, and integrity. NTA students embody these commitments and specifically reflect on integrity every day through their leadership roles in community service. While considering South Loop's and near-south's needs for a larger elementary and high school, please remember that NTA is exactly what CPS can and should be. NTA should be allowed to continue to set the standard as an elementary school. I stand with the NTA community and Chicagoans United for Equity in calling for a pause to this plan. This proposal should not move forward without an independent equity analysis and a community-led process.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayer. Our next speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker 29, Troy Harden, please.
Thank you. Good morning. I come to you today as both, I'm a professor at Northeastern Illinois University. I run the social work department there. And my work has been around trauma and violence in the city, particularly around school and school-aged youth. But I come to you today, more importantly, as a parent of an amazing, rising fourth grader at NTA. We found NTA, you know, searching for a school, and like most parents, we were stressed, anxious, worried, but optimistic. And when we came to NTA, our daughter thrived, the teachers embraced her, and all the children at the school. The staff were amazing, and other parents and the children have been amazing. We found a home and a family. This changed our tension to promise, and any fears that we may have had changed in that new environment. In a Chicago where mass displacement has happened to schools and housing, where high stress exists because of the violence in our communities, we need schools that are stable and environments that are stable. Because we are a Level 1 and rising school, I thought maybe we wouldn't have this type of stress, but ultimately, it exists. And it exists when we disrupt the lives of children. 500 black children are being asked to move against their will, against what they want. It's never happened and been documented in the history of this country with 500 white children who are asked to move to another school without a natural disaster. So is this a natural disaster that we're dealing with? So there is a And there's opportunity to look at that and pause for a moment and engage in an equity analysis that gives us the opportunity to do something meaningful and different. Our children deserve this.
Mr. Hardin.
We deserve this in this city.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Mr. President, the next speakers will be Speaker 47, please. Kayla Walker, followed by Speaker 57, Aket Obat. 58, Jordan Hall. 22, David Stovall. 52, Soshi Banda. And then we'll go back to number 1, Andrew Broi, please. Please state your name.
My name is Kayla Perkins. I'm headed to the 7th grade in the fall. I've attended NTA since kindergarten. I love my school. I have made the honor roll every quarter since the 1st grade. I have and continue to learn and grow so much. I would not be academically and socially where I am today if it was not for my amazing administration, teachers, and all of the staff at my school. It is true, NTA is where learning never ends and where we all feel safe. I've had some sleepless nights wondering, questioning, what will happen to myself and all of my peers who will be in the middle of our 8th-grade year if CPS changed NTA to a high school? NTA teaches us every day about integrity and perseverance. Where will I go? Who will do the hard work like our school counselor with making sure our high school applications are submitted on time, applying and taking tests for selective enrollment high schools? Our 8th-grade graduation? All of these worries, and as kids, we shouldn't have to worry about our second home, our safe haven where our teachers and staff positively impact our lives every day to prepare us for high school and beyond. I am a proud student of NTA. CPS, I ask you to remove politics and racism out of your decision and consider what we as students want. We love our Level 1 high-performing school. We have pride. We want to graduate from our own school, NTA. Every student deserves to have an excellent education. NTA provides and meets all of our academic needs. Stop playing roulette with our education at NTA.
Our next speaker, please. 57, Akat Obat.
Young lady. What is your name again?
Kayla Perkins.
You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Akat Obat, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Speaker 58, Jordan Hall.
Excuse me. I want to address the entire group after the NTA advocate speak, and I prefer if the students stay just to make sure they get all of the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Hall, please. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Speaker 22, David Stovall.
Peace and greetings, everybody. My name is David Stovall. I am a professor of Educational Policy Studies and African-American Studies at the University of Illinois at Chicago. I look at the intersection of race, place, and school. It has come to my attention that National Teachers Academy is on the docket for a potential closer. But this is what we know about closures in CPS and how NTA actually contrasts what we know about closures. NTA currently has a third of its population as part of the magnet program, a third of the population that is from the neighborhood, and a third of the population that has been displaced from the 49 schools that were closed in the summer of 2013. Now, in that space, in Chicago public schools, there are 16 schools that actually have increased performance data for neighborhood youth. National Teachers Academy is one of them. They also have a teaching staff—with teaching staff who are there as original members. What we do know about this displacement and what we do know as researchers around the goals and aspirations of young people and the performance of young people in public schools, when they are displaced, their performance decreases. You have an opportunity to make sure that this does not happen, and as people have asked for an equity audit, I would encourage the board to rethink around the process and what has resulted from displacement in Chicago public schools since 2004 and the advent of Renaissance 2010. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. And our next speaker, please. 52, Soshi Beta.
My name is Soshi Tulbada, and I am a professor of Latin American and Latino Studies at the University of Illinois at Chicago. Good morning. On Friday, July 21st, I was alarmed to read that $55 million in TIF funds that were granted to the new McCormick Place development were systematically sephoned off and transferred to Navy Pier over the past four years. My concern comes as a taxpayer, but also as a parent of a child at National Teachers Academy, a high-performing school that CPS is trying to close. This school sits two blocks from McCormick Place. It's in the same TIF district where $55 million were diverted to Navy Pier. The information that shocks me the most is the fact that after stealing that money from our TIF district, CPS is now trying to close NTA, arguing financial reasons. CPS believes that closing NTA is the most cost-effective solution to a problem they have prioritized at this financially difficult time, namely answering that the need for a South Loop high school. CPS intends to close NTA because emptying its 80% Black and 80% low-income students will allow them to reopen the building as a high school that serves the wealthier South Loop community. This is the same South Loop community that rejects the current neighborhood high school, Phillips Academy, which has a population that is 98% Black and 98% low-income. Dr. Jackson keeps repeating that this is necessary for financial reasons. How dare Dr. Jackson demand the sacrifice of low-income Black children of Chicago for the second time in less than five years? Over 200 of NTA students came to us after they were displaced in the largest school closings in U.S. history. And how—
Ms. Bada, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, that concludes the NTA speakers.
Yeah. Just a couple of things, and I don't want to debate, go back and forth on all the things, but just to clarify a few key points that were raised today. Starting with the student question around where to go, we did make clear at our last community meeting that the students who attend the school would be able to attend the high school. So the answer to that question is, you know, if you love NTA as much as you say you do, which I firmly believe, you would have not only an opportunity to have that high-quality education K-12 or pre-K through 8—I'm sorry, pre-K through 8—you can now have it all the way through 12th grade. So I just wanted to answer and clarify that. There are few—you all say we never respond. Now I'm responding. There are few questions or concerns with the timeline that was presented to the board today. Number 1, the first time that this was raised as an issue, there was no plan to speak of. I was asked a question in a public setting and answered the question truthfully and honestly. And just to be clear, so that my words are no longer misinterpreted, I've never made a statement about this transition being about finance. This transition, in my opinion, is about equity. The boundaries that currently exist were drawn to prevent what we are trying to reverse: students who live primarily in the Long Grove Homes and the Hilliard Homes having access to the South Loop School, which is currently not the case. I like the idea of an equity study because a lot of the things you've pointed out today will definitely come to light and be reaffirmed, but some things that you have conveniently left out will also be affirmed. The fact that when you walk through NTA, you go to one 3rd-grade classroom that is diverse, and you go to one that is all Black. That is a problem. You talk about the data in the school. When you disaggregate that data, the students in the neighborhood school are not seeing the same level of performance that the students in the gifted program are seeing. They're not. We have the data, and I'm happy to share it and make it transparent. So what I'm talking about is about equity and providing those options. I would want to see students in a neighborhood school where they're in there with their peers that are made up of different races, from different socioeconomic backgrounds, which currently is not the case in NTA. So I would love to have a conversation around equity and how we do this right, should the board move in this direction. But I want to be clear that this line that's been drawn around race, the intersection of race, class, and all the other things that pour into this, I just want to make sure everybody's being reflective as they level some of those complaints. This is a complicated issue. Everything that people have said as they came to the podium today, there is truth in everything, and in some part of that. It's complicated. There's no easy fix. But I want to dispel any allegation that this is being done to discredit or to displace African-American children. In fact, it's being done to reverse something that was done that was wrong. We're going to build a brand-new school in the South Loop. I drive past that every day, and I don't think the kids who live in Long Grove and Hilliard Homes should have to walk past that brand-new school and go to another school if they don't want to. And that's how this conversation started. We will continue to have conversations with you. We've had the same meetings that you have referenced. You've had access to the board, access to senior leaders, community meetings. We will continue to engage you, but I just want to make sure that people are clear that this is a process that we take seriously, and it has nothing to do with finance. This is about maximizing the space that you all tell us we don't do in the city and coming up with a plan that we believe serves the greater good, not just a small group of people.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. Let us proceed with public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the next speaker is Andrew Broi from INCS, and then we'll proceed with the group from the South Loop School. Mr. Broi.
Andrew Broi with the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. I'm here today to say a few words about the universal enrollment system. I became active in this work more than 15 years ago because I believe firmly in lowering barriers for students to attend high-performing schools tailored to their individual needs. We believe that universal enrollment, while not risk-free, furthers that core mission. As a result, we convened a series of five meetings with every charter high school leader in the city over the past three months. Based on these meetings and further discussions with CPS staff, 100% of our member schools have agreed to participate in this universal enrollment system. In short, the Chicago charter community is committed to the ideal of lowering barriers for parents to allow their children to choose which high school to attend. We have taken this step principally because it aligns with the goals on which our movement was founded 20 years ago: to increase access to high-quality school options in Chicago, particularly for students who don't have access to strong schools currently. Streamlining the enrollment process, consolidating applications, and creating consistent enrollment timeframes across all CPS high schools will help parents and students maneuver a currently challenging application system. It is in keeping with the ideals of the charter movement, access and equity, even if it means that students attend other school types. Our organization, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, and the charter of public school community stand ready to work with the district to ensure all students are provided a high-quality school at a school of choice at the high school level. They deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broi. Thank you for your comments. Mr. President, and our next speakers will be Speaker 3, please. Jennifer Rockstead, followed by Speaker 13, Shannon Sullivan, and Speaker 33, Wendy Owens. Please state your name.
Jennifer Rockstead. I am the parent of a 5th and an 8th grader at South Loop Elementary. My children have been at South Loop since preschool. I'm a 14-year resident of the near-south side. I was here before you about a year ago to ask for help with our South Loop overcrowding, which we've been working on since 2009. You all responded and supported us with the new building that was referred to earlier, and I want to thank you for that. You're supporting a diverse Level 1+ school, and depending on what happens with the proposal, we would welcome expanding that, and some of my colleagues will be talking about that later. I do want to speak specifically as the parent of an 8th grader. I firsthand am very cognizant of the challenges around not having a viable neighborhood high school on the near-south side. Phillips was mentioned. I think it's only 4% of the neighborhood—or the huge boundary that can attend Phillips actually attends Phillips. It's a Level 2 school. It's not a viable option. I just went through the 7th grade year with my son, which was definitely the most stressful thing he's experienced. It certainly was probably at least as stressful as my college application process because there are so few—excuse me—selective enrollment slots in the city, and we do not have a viable neighborhood option to go to. So I'm here to support the plans to move forward with a neighborhood high school, whether it's NTA. I know other options are being looked at and floated, possibly Dunbar, I've heard, but I do want to say that that is something that many of us who are in the South Loop support. People are fleeing the South Loop because, you know, as early as 3rd, 4th grade because there is no neighborhood high school option. I do want, in my last few seconds, point out, a parent reached out to me and asked me to use part of my time to talk about diverse learners. She has a son with an IEP who lives in the neighborhood, and she wanted me to emphasize that having a neighborhood option, a K-12 model for diverse learners, students who have challenges, is critical. Some of the selective enrollments in that process can be really challenging, and having that for—
Thank you, Ms. Rockstead.
—those diverse learners would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please. Shannon Sullivan.
Good morning, if it still is. My name is Shannon Sullivan. I'm here on behalf of Parents for Teachers today. I also have rising 3rd and 4th graders at National Teachers Academy, one in the Regional Gifted Center and one in the Neighborhood Program. I am the very white mother of two very Black children who spent five years and six years, respectively, in foster care. And I am the parent leader that Wendy referenced. I asked you that question, Dr. Jackson, at that forum with my daughter right next to me about the boundary change for the school. And we thank you for your honesty, but to say that we have had the opportunity to consider a high school proposal is the worst type of lie and misrepresentation. That Crane's article came out on June 6th, where you were quoted in a phone interview as saying that you were proposing to turn it into a high school. And the first community forum was that night. It's just ridiculous to say that we've been included or we've had time to consider it. I take your point about the all-Black classrooms versus the diverse classrooms because I have a son—a Black son—in a diverse classroom, and I have a Black daughter in a very not-diverse classroom at all. And I also take your point about the lack of neighborhood involvement in the high schools. Dunbar, Phillips, and Tilden are the examples, but I am done with talking about those high schools as if they don't belong to all of us. I was stunned, stunned, to hear—I think Chip is his name—at the July 10th forum dismiss Phillips outright, as if the 400-and-some students who go there don't matter. They matter. And to say that folks from the Long Grove Homes—who are here—you can speak to the folks from the Long Grove Homes or the Hilliards—they're here today—they will not walk past 16th and Dearborn to go to 22nd and State. That's geographically incorrect. We have access to a state-of-the-art facility, Level 1 school, with almost 300 displaced students from Price already. It is ridiculous to talk about these high schools as if they don't belong to all of us. They do, and we need them, and we need them to be high-performing.
Our next speaker, please. Ms. Owens.
Hi, good morning. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am Wendy Owens, an actively engaged parent volunteer at the South Loop School, pardon me, and have been a South Loop resident for 18 years. I've witnessed the transformation of the retail and residential sectors of the South Loop community and understand and have witnessed the educational options significantly lagging behind. The fact that less than 4% of teenagers who graduate from near-south elementary schools in the last decade choose not to attend Wendell or Tilden speaks volumes regarding the great need for high school options in our community, one which provides diversity, cultural, ethnic —and socioeconomic options while providing a rigorous curriculum and safe environment for our children. Ms. Drake is a teacher at—Ms. Colton, pardon me—is a teacher at Drake Elementary School, and she talks about the fact that children have to cross the street, gang boundaries. As a parent, that's frightening, right? And the fact that we congregate when our children are in kindergarten and think about where are our children going to go—to high school—is really unnerving and unsettling. Additionally, I think that bringing a high-quality high school to the South Loop would be a shining example for the community, a much-needed shining example. I understand that there are many complexities, and I don't want to get into those. I wish that we could come to a resolution that would benefit NTA, South Loop, and the entire community at large, right? I ask that you implore options to utilize TIF funds to make sure that you meet the needs of the much-needed challenges in the African-American community as well. So thank you today.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. And, Mr. President, we have additional speakers. Thank you, Ms. Owens. And, Mr. President, we have additional speakers. We'll proceed with Speaker number 18, please, Kathleen Clayton, followed by Speaker 51, Maureen Gaffney. We will then have Speaker number 5, Sylvia Yu, Speaker 6, Mandy Yu, followed by Speaker 43, Ayona Wong, and Speaker 56, J.C. Yale. Ms. Clayton, please.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Young Clayton, and I am the parent of two beautiful South Loop Elementary School children. I'm a proud graduate of CPS and truly believe that diversity is a core principle for success in this global world. I've never complained about paying my taxes because I truly believe in paying more when one has more, not until now. I just got our new property tax bill in the mail, you know, the one sucking 10% more out of our pocketbooks. Squared with this with the recent Crane's article about $55 million being funneled through South Loop TIFs for Navy Pier, and then, on top of it all, we've heard it all summer that CPS borrowed $1.8 billion just from May to July of this year and services $1 billion of that debt at 6%, while other cities pay 1.5. When I said that I was okay paying more when one has more, that did not mean to line the wallets of fat cat developers and bankers. So, if CPS and the city can't manage their money right, why should we believe that they've managed this planning process right and that this is the best deal for residents in the district and taxpayers across the city? We need a transparent and accountable plan that includes bringing more resources to already-existing high schools right in the area like Dunbar, Tilden, and Phillips. We don't need to destroy a high-functioning elementary school like NTA, which in any other city in America would be held up as a model for school integration and performance, not used as a bargaining chip to stir racial tensions. That CPS even thought it would be acceptable to shut down a high-performing, majority African-American elementary school and starve its surrounding high schools of resources is just wrong and is part of the larger problem of why our city that used to work is so dysfunctional right now. I am a founding member of Chicagoans United for Equity and stand in unity with the parents of NTA to call for this process to be halted, for real independent equity analysis to happen for the near-south side, and for community voices to be heard and listened to in a true democratic fashion to better the outcomes for all of us in this city that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Our next speaker, please, Maureen Gaffney.
Good morning. My name is Maureen Gaffney, and I'm a self-supporting, single mother of a 10-year-old boy at South Loop. Yes, I'm concerned about the current overcrowding of classes at South Loop. 40 to 50 kids per class is unacceptable, and yes, I'd like a neighborhood school. However, there are too many factors to consider in this proposal to convert NTA to a neighborhood high school. I was lucky enough to know some parents from NTA and heard more from them from their point of view, that instead of having an opportunity to hear about this before the decision was made, that there was some backroom deal that was forcing this plan on all of us. And then I heard how the overcrowding wasn't some kind of natural disaster but a CPS-made problem that was cooked up to make us all think in the South Loop we had a major problem. Then I heard from the parents of NTA about this beautiful school that they had worked so hard to support. It broke my heart, but it also made me mad. Why would CPS close down a school like this, displacing all these students to make a way for a high school that none of our kids will ever go to? And even if they did, I'd never feel good about that. I've come to respect their passion and their love for their kids and for a vision of justice that I truly believe in. Being a compliance officer across financial services for 30-plus years here in this city, I read about these sweetheart deals, and my world really becomes the misappropriation of our property tax dollars to subsidize developers, Navy Pier, tourism. So, enough is enough. I'm standing with all the parents to call for a slowdown to this messed-up process to allow for an independent analysis to be made and to call CPS to be more transparent and accountable to us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaffney. And our next speaker, please, 5, Sylvia Yu.
Thank you. Yes, I immigrated, Sylvia Wu, immigrated from China, 1946. After World War II, my family settled in Chinatown. I had some wonderful teachers at John C. Haynes School who taught me to speak English and also modeled to me that teaching is a noble profession. You've heard for months that students in the Armour Square and Bridgeport didn't have a high school in their community. Well, my parents had the same dilemma in finding a high school when I graduated from Haynes School in 1952. My parents chose to move and send me and my twin sister to Lakeview High School. Yes, we had a long way to go. We had to wake up very early to get to school on time. After college, I taught a few years at Haynes School before raising my family and my kids grown. I served as a principal of the Puituck Christian School in Chinatown for over 20 years. I'm retired now, but I'm still active in church, in the community, and volunteering at the school. I often run into my former students, alumnis, and their parents, and they're eager to tell me and update me on their children, and so many of them attended selective enrollment high schools. Were there others who tell me about schools that their children had to go to very far from Chinatown, and some went to schools I had never heard of? Chinatown had certainly changed since I first arrived in 1946, but one very needed change still hasn't happened. It would be wonderful to have a high school close to Chinatown, and I urge the Chicago Public Schools to devote the resources to make this needed change a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yu. And our next speaker, please, Speaker number 6, Mandy Yu.
Greetings, everybody. My name is Mandy Wu, and I am 8 years old. And today, as you know, we are gathered here today to speak about a high school. So, I'd like to say that having a high school for my future is important so that I can have good education. And with that education, when I grow up, I will have the power to do lots of things like college and buying a house or finding a job. I know this isn't possible, but maybe someone could even become a panda if they worked hard enough. So, what do you think of you parents out there? Think. Do you care for your child's education? Do you? I want you to think about that tonight. And one more thing before I go. Where do I get this knowledge, you may ask? School. Raise your hand if you also think that school is important to you slash and/or your child. Yes, it's important to me, too. I'm depending on CPS. Please build a high school. I believe we can do this and make Chicago a better place. Please, we have so many preschools and elementary schools, but why no high school? We've been waiting desperately. Please, don't let us down. Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Before you start, how old was that young lady?
8.
Where is she again? That was just so well-done. Your head barely got above the podium, but your voice reached us all.
Mr. President, she was writing the end part when she was sitting next to me. I saw her was writing.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speaker is Speaker number 43, Ayona Wong.
My name... My name is Ayona Huang. I am a rising junior at Winnie M. Young Magna High School. My parents are immigrants and don't know English very well. From a young age, I was taught Mandarin and Cantonese by my family members. I pride myself in being able to speak multiple languages because it helps me connect with my culture and to interact with my relatives. Though I consider this an advantage, for those who can only speak Chinese, this can prove to be a problem. For those who can't speak English, language barriers are one of the biggest problems they face. This is why it is important that these Chinese immigrants, especially the students, are given the opportunity to learn English at their schools. Many of the Chinatown Neighborhood Elementary Schools, such as Healy and Haynes, provide programs for immigrants. They're designed to help them learn English. However, these programs are often not seen at the high school level. My younger cousin, who just graduated from Haynes in June, immigrated to Chicago from China a few years ago. I had to tutor her in English when she first started school, and I could tell that the bilingual program that she participated in had helped her greatly. Besides my cousin, I also knew multiple other people who had participated in these programs. Now that English has become such a major language around the world, the demand for programs for LEP students has increased. When I was in 6th grade, I was accepted into the Academic Center at Winnie Young. As an Academic Center student, I was automatically given the opportunity to continue on to high school there without having to reply. When my older brother was going through the process of applying to high school, it was a stressful ordeal, not just for my parents, but also for my brother. Applying to high schools is already stressful enough for students and families. Students living in Chinatown need the option of having a local high school that is close to home but still provides a good education and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huang. And our next speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker number 56, please, J.C. Yale, followed by Speaker number 14, Sadia Siddique, followed by Speaker 24, John Powers, Speaker 4, Latia Taylor, and Speaker 7, Andrea Tolzman.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Yo, and I serve on the LSC at Mark Sheridan Academy. I was a Chicago Public School student for a good portion of my life and a proud Robert Healy graduate. However, my time with CPS as a student would soon be cut short. I'm a typical Chinese-American student who lived in Chinatown and was not academically gifted enough to be accepted to a selective enrollment high school. The Winnie Young and Elaine Tech dreams were not even tangible for a student like me as I had a learning disability. So, therefore, going to a nice school like Winnie Young was a pipe dream. So, while I saw all my friends go to a better school, I was heading south, and I felt my life was heading south. I was assigned to a neighborhood school, Tilden's High School, which was a weak academically and in a rough neighborhood. So, I decided to go to Currie High School, which was my best choice, although it definitely was not my experience. It was hard commuting on a ETA 50 minutes away from home and dealing with the violence within the school and the violence outside of the school. And I had to plead with my parents to transfer me out of the high school to into a private, all-girls high school to escape the bullying I didn't want to endure anymore and to find a safer commute home. Students like me didn't deserve this treatment. We deserved a better educational environment. We aren't bad students. Just students who can, just average students who can contribute to this society if we're given the opportunities. It's very important to have a safe and secure high school and a shorter commute time. Please consider my testimony as what these students might be going through today. My family currently lives in Bridgeport on West 37th Street, and my children are coming up in age where they might need a better option for high school. So, please consider our needs for a high school in Chinatown and Bridgeport community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Yu.
We spoke yesterday particularly about the bullying issue that you referred to today. Now, I know that was years ago, but the fact that you had to endure that, I mean, no student, not you or anyone else, should have to endure the episode of bullying that you described to me. And this is, again, something that I refer to our chief security officer who's behind you. That never should have occurred wherever you went.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next speaker, please, Speaker 14, Sadia Siddique.
Good morning. Thank you, Board. My name is Sadia Siddique. I'm a resident of the South Loop. I've been a resident there for over 15 years. I'm also a practicing immigration attorney. Diversity, opportunities are very important for me. So, when I decided to move to the South Loop, and now I have two kids, soon-to-be 2nd and 5th grader, diversity was very important to me. What I found that in attending my neighborhood school at South Loop is we have that diversity. We have a racial makeup, ethnic makeup of 41% African-American, 26% white, 13% Asian, 9.5% Hispanic. We have our annual around-the-world celebration where over 27 countries are represented. This, to me, is the beauty of living in the city of Chicago and also living in the South Loop, where we can have, as a neighborhood school, an elementary school that represents that diversity. I also want to say, then, with that, the idea that we do not have a neighborhood high school, that would also be an indicator of that, is something that is sorely lacking. It is something which has been needed for a very long time. You know, a parent also spoke about how long we've been struggling to request a high school in addition to relieving the overcrowding at our school. So, I thank you for CPS for bringing forward a proposal which would hopefully allow for integration, a broader sense of community, and a high school which truly represents that diversity that we're all looking for. And I also want to say that I have here also a parent who's a representative from Drake Elementary. She has over 63 signatures from individuals in the community and also Drake Elementary School who support a neighborhood high school in the South Loop. So, we implore upon CPS to consider this and then to also allow for individuals, for there to be a gradual transition into that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siddique. Our next speaker, please, Speaker 24, John Powers.
My name is John Powers, and I say to the board that lack of planning and organization on your part should not necessitate that low-income and minority children be displaced because of your incompetence. Where is your 630B filing? That's evidence of your lack of planning and organization. Ignoring planning requirements does not endure trust. It does prove that you only serve Mayor Rahm Emanuel, and you don't care about the constituents or the taxpayers of Chicago. Mr. Claypool and Ms. Jackson, at the last Board of Education meeting, you were given a VIP invitation to the last town hall meeting by children and students of the National Teachers Academy. You could not even take the common decency to respond to that RSVP. So, when you say you're listening, "I've been at the town hall meetings," you're not there. They're nothing more than big pep rallies. So, the fact that you say you're listening and there's transparency is falling on deaf ears. You spent $120 million to build the Jones Selective Enrollment School in the South Loop when you needed a South Loop school for everyone. You knew that then. $55 million in TIF funds, I'm sure you don't agree with that, for Navy Pier, but that big Ferris wheel just shows what a circus this all is. To Mr. Claypool, your pinned tweet on Twitter about the importance of standing up and fighting for minorities is, I find, hypocritical. Either stand up and fight for minorities of the National Teachers Academy students or remove that tweet. Mr. Chip Johnson said that it would be more expensive to build a high school on the space that the SLE school is planned for. Where's the proof? I've spoken to two architects who say that's false. Bringing together South Loop Elementary and NTA is supposed to be integration. Look up in the dictionary the definition of integration. It means equality. Displacing these students is not equal. It's racist. Thank you.
Mr. Powers. Our next speaker, please, Latia Taylor.
Hello. My name is Latia Taylor, and I'm a kindergarten teacher. I've been in CPS since 2012 and have been impacted by the consistent and yearly cuts to my school's budget. How can I effectively prepare my 30-plus kindergarten students yearly with limited funding and resources? Every year, every month, I have to come out of pocket to fund my students' education. Due to CPS cuts, myself and other teachers are constantly scrambling to provide high-quality education to our students. This is unfair to us teachers, and this is a disservice to our students. Today, I demand that CPS and Rahm stop imposing cuts on our schools and on early education programs. Neighborhood public schools that serve our most disadvantaged Black and Brown students need responsible sources of new revenue, revenue that will fund the educational and support programs and adequately fund classrooms that our students need and deserve. But due to the reckless borrowing and unfair cuts, Black and Brown children in Chicago's most disenfranchised neighborhoods are denied special ed programs and teachers, are denied Head Start parent resource personnel, are denied violence counselors, denied libraries. The list can go on and on. All families deserve quality early-care preschool education and well-funded schools. Today, I demand that the city fulfill their obligation to support our students and their neighborhoods and fund public schools with public dollars, and stop giving those public dollars to corporations that don't need or deserve those handouts. So, I leave this with you, Board of Ed officials. Be the change you wish to see in this world. Save our neighborhood schools and stop supporting cuts to our schools. Give us our well-funded schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, our next speakers then will be Speaker number 7, please, Andrea Tolzman, followed by Speaker number 9, Jennifer Jones, Speaker 36, Quentin Jones, and then we'll have Speaker number 50, James Gray. Please proceed.
Hello. My name is Andrea Tolzman, and I am with Raise Your Hand, and I'm a parent of two CPS students. Here we are beginning another school year in financial crisis mode with about half our schools seeing cuts and the rest not sure if we'll sustain mid-year cuts again because CPS... because CPS balanced the budget with money that's not guaranteed from the state. CPS says they have a five-hundred-forty-four-million-dollar deficit for the upcoming school year, and even if SB one passes, which we hope it does, it won't scratch the surface of what our schools need for full funding. Yet we have seen no advocacy from you for local revenue, for more TIF funds, as Raise Your Hand has been pushing for, for seven years. And the children of Chicago are yet again slapped in the face by the absurd recent revelation of the BGA in Cranes, that instead of surpassing money from the MPEA project, fifty-five million dollars was given to Navy Pier, clearly showing the priorities of this city. When will you speak up about this? In addition, on today's report, you have a one-million-dollar no-bid contract to Atlantic Research Partners owned by the person who bought Supes and who introduced Barbara Bird Bennett to Gary Solomon. How is this even possible? He has made seven million dollars off of CPS over the past five years. Meanwhile, schools like Fenger, Harper, Harlan, Kelvin Park, Manley, and Orr are all losing over ten percent budget of their budgets again this year, and you've found money for this guy. It's despicable. Many people, myself included, have been coming to you year after year, asking you, "What is the plan? What is the backup plan when state funding doesn't materialize? What is the long-term plan for sustainable funding? What is this board doing to work with Chicago's City Council to get more sustainable funding for our schools?" It's clear that no plan, there is no plan, and there won't be one as long as we have an appointed board who works for the interests of the mayor and not the students. It's too bad when there are so many dedicated parents and community members who actually understand how important it is to have a strong, well-resourced school system, one in which students know they are more important than Ferris wheels and clout contractors. Perhaps one of you will stand up one day, today, and say, "Hey, this is no way to run a school district. Have some integrity. Don't tell us our facts are wrong. There's nothing factually inaccurate about fifty-five million dollars to Navy Pier or the one-million-dollar no-bid contract to Joey B. Wise, who introduced Barbara Bird Bennett and Gary Solomon." Please be courageous today for our students. Speak out against TIF management and do your due diligence and vote no on this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolzman. Our next speaker, please, Speaker number nine, Jennifer Jones.
My name is Jennifer Jones, and I'm a parent of two CPS students. My sixth-grade son has had an IEP since kindergarten, and today I'm here to share our experience with Melissa Holmes, the most dedicated and effective social worker he's ever worked with. Ms. Holmes is who I want supporting my child when I'm not there, a child who, despite being academically gifted, faces challenges navigating a general education setting every day. With the supports Ms. Holmes worked with him to develop, practice, and utilize, he was able to thrive this past year. She laid the groundwork to help him function more independently now and in the future. She didn't rely on watered-down cooperative games to fill her time with him. She listened to what he was struggling with and helped him to develop strategies he could actually use to feel better and move past frustrations. With Ms. Holmes' guidance, he learned to self-regulate and better advocate for himself. Through her innovative movement exercises and creative projects, he gained confidence and learned the benefits of self-reflection. These skills are so critical to every child and not always easy to achieve for special-needs children. Melissa was a valued addition to our school Skinner North and the four other schools across the city that she worked at this past year. She is an asset to our district, which is why I can't imagine why CPS terminated her. As I talked with teachers and parents who worked with her, I learned I am not alone. She is well-respected, and everyone at our school had extremely positive experiences with her. She also advocated for the needs of her students and spoke to you all earlier this year about her special education cut concerns. I sincerely wonder if this influenced the decision to terminate her. I request that you review and reconsider Ms. Holmes' employment standing with CPS. In our budget-crisis climate, when staff is being expected to do more with less, she should be applauded for her dedication and hard work. For your reference, I have-
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
... many positive testimonies from parents and teachers who have worked with Ms. Holmes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next speaker, please, Speaker number thirty-six, Quentin Jones.
Hello. My name is Quinn Jones. I'm a rising sixth grader at Skinner North. I have received CPS special ed since kindergarten. I have Asperger's and sensory processing disorder and face academic and social challenges throughout my school day. One of the most important people for me at my school is my social worker because they help me with strategies to calm down and also teach me ways I can ask for help. Last year, I had a new social worker, Ms. Melissa Holmes, and she was the best I've ever had. Not only did I spend time with her every Wednesday, she was there to help me when I needed to get through a challenge. She was different than my other social workers because rather than talking about generic issues, she let me focus on actual issues I was having. She cared about what I needed help with, not a fictional conflict. She taught me to use movement and meditation to calm down and feel better about difficult situations. I always look forward to the time I spend with her because I could clear my mind and work through frustrations so I could refocus on classwork. Ms. Holmes left Skinner North last spring to go to a new school. I was really sad but tried to remember that she would be able to help kids at another school. When I heard that she was fired shortly after she left, I was so surprised and angry. Why would they ever do that to the best social worker I ever had? We loved her, and she helped us so much. I really hope CPS would consider their decision because CPS students are lucky to have a social worker like Ms. Holmes. I hope you will consider my request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Quentin.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Vice President, is James Gray, please.
So I'm here to talk about values. So I'm the parent of two kids at Hamilton Elementary School, and I'm a recently retired CPS employee after sixteen years in the district, eight years as principal. So I'm fully aware of the financial challenges the district is facing right now in dealing with the poor decisions of prior administrations and also of Mayor Daley to not pay into the teacher fund for a decade. I recall hearing Arnie Duncan implore principals in 2007 to not send their students on field trips to Springfield because the state's funding of schools was abysmal, so things haven't changed too much. So I understand the context of the decisions you're making in this budget that has just come out and been released to principals. A budget must also be in balance with our values. We owe it to our city and to the generation who come after us to do what is right, even when it's hard. Those aren't my words. Those are Mayor Emanuel's words. This year, CPS is funding special education teachers at a hundred thousand dollars per position and classroom assistants at fifty thousand dollars per position. Two problems with this. Number one, the data from the position report on June thirty shows average salaries are more than that, and you've short-changed schools already during this budget process. Second part, you have effectively segregated schools into haves and have-nots. What do I mean by that? Some schools have enough money to cover all their special ed positions because they have newer, less expensive staff. Other schools, many schools that I've talked to, principals do not have enough money to cover their positions. So what do they do? They have to dip into their general education funds. Budgets are about values. We've seen the governor does not value children in Chicago. What are your values when the decision is made to fund the full cost of teachers and staff for some schools but not others? Remember the mayor's words.
Ms. Gray.
Do what's right, even when, even when it's hard. Fund all special ed positions in our schools.
Thank you for your comments.
Before the next speaker, actually, I thought your comments were thoughtful, and you do have a command of the history of some of the issues we face, and you have a very clear recommendation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers will then be Speaker number ten, please, Marilyn Ross, followed by Speaker twenty-five, Audrey Johnson. We will then have Speaker eleven, Eric Jenkins, followed by Speaker fifteen, Verleen Hill, and Speaker sixteen, Jason Farrell. Speaker number ten, please, Marilyn Ross. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker. Marilyn?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you.
I was here to speak about utilizing the funds. We already know that, you know, they did think when we're calling places, Navy Pier got the money, which is wrong. You got a bigger Ferris wheel, but we less education for those kids. That's where the money should be. But I also want to touch on you saying about Long Grove because I've lived in Long Grove for quite a while. And I remember back, a few years back, where we was at South Loop, and they told us we couldn't be there anymore because they had built NTA. They changed the boundaries then. They forced us to go to NTA. I didn't want to take my grandkids to NTA, but I had no options. I had no choices. They cut the bus service, and they told us we had no options. So we went there, you know? So now for you all to tell us once again, being part of the Long Grove community, we love NTA. I watch NTA grow. I watch the teachers go back to school and become masters of what they do. NTA is not only a learning institution for our children, it's a learning institution for the teachers. I never understood that NTA, National Teachers Academy, but it's an academy as well for the teachers because they're not only teaching our kids, our kids are teaching them to be better teachers. So it's all around, it's a good foundation, and it makes no sense to eliminate them for what they're doing. It should be modeled. There should be more schools like NTA. But no, we're not happy at Long Grove because not only do we have parents that have kids that's going there and they have to work, so they're sending their kids to school with the older kids, but now you're separating them. So now you have the little kids at one school and the bigger kids at another school, and then you not, it's not going to be a K through twelve at NTA. Eventually, it's going to be just a high school. So you eventually going to weed out all the little kids, and they're going to have to go behind Mariano's, and once again, I'm going to say this, the foundation of that building, next door to Mariano's and to the police station, should be the foundation for a high school because you have security there. You about to put another thousand, twelve-hundred, sixteen-hundred adults in the South Loop area. We already know what high schools bring. You know, they don't-
Ms. Russ.
... but they bring issues.
Ms. Russ.
And I'm just saying, I know. And I'm just saying, we're not happy at Long Grove about the decisions because we've been through this before.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please, Audrey Johnson.
Hello. My name is Audrey Johnson. I'm a parent of National Teachers Academy, five, well, three already graduated. Also, I have eleven nieces and nephews that attend there, and I'm also a resident of Ickies for over forty years. So I've been in the community on, as we call it, the low end all my life. I just want to piggyback on some of the things that some of the people said. Like far as a few years ago, we were a level one, a level three school. Why? Because of the changes. We have, we've been displaced three times from Williams to tearing down out of development. That was a hard thing for our children. So we kind of fell back because seeing our children looking out the window, seeing their homes going down. So that took a lot out of them. But we came back up. Far as the gang thing, I lived in the Ickies. Gangs, please. It's right out my back door, but it didn't stop us. We kept it moving. Far as the districts, once we moved, I lived on Seventy-Fourth and Evans. I came to school with my kids every day and on time. So district shouldn't be a problem. Every day and on time with all five of mine. Far as Ms. Jackson, I love you. I have to say that. I must say. I could say, "Continue to do your job, but please take, you know what it is."
I've heard.
We come from, you know where we come from. So, and Mr. Clark, say this again, I need you to be like Joe Clark, going lean on me and save my school.
Our next speaker, please, Speaker eleven, Eric Jenkins.
Good afternoon to the board and to the public. My name is Eric Jenkins, Community Representative for the Kenwood Academy LSC. As some of you guys may know, Kenwood Academy facilities management has been a topic of our improvement, from pest control to HVAC system replacement. The issues of our school's maintenance and engineering have been of concern. I want to first thank the parents, students, and teachers and community members who have organized to bring these issues to light. I would also like to thank the Board of Education, Alderman, Sophia King, and other community leaders who have helped us begin the process to work on improving Kenwood's facilities. As a projected facilities, as the projected facilities project plan has begun with targets set dates of action items to be completed before the school year is to begin, we understand that there is a new integrated facilities management model, which Kenwood has not started yet, it hasn't started at Kenwood yet, but we do hope that it will improve the communications with Kenwood and other schools with Airmark. It is our hope that the board will continue to support Kenwood's facility management improvement as we enter into the next fiscal year with checks and balances on all sides. We further hope that the board, as well as parents, students, teachers, and community members, continue to keep regulation of these said improvements. Due to the cost of, like, large costs of the replacement of our HVAC system and things like that, we do hope that we can be included in the capital budget for 2018 for some of our larger improvements. The LSC has, did, we did adopt a resolve, in which I won't read here, I can leave it for you guys to review on your own, but it was our resolution basically stated that we do support the parents, teachers, and community members coming together to help improve the health and safety and the facilities at Kenwood Academy, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. And our next speaker is Speaker fifteen, please, Verleen Hill.
My name is Ms. Hill, and I am a proud and active parent of a senior at Noble Hansberry College Prep located on the south side of Chicago. When my daughter was in eighth grade, we were on a search for a good high school. Hansberry stood out because it was located in our neighborhood, it was small, and it provided a safe environment. I know my daughter, she needed small and small environment in order to be successful, and Hansberry offered that. The teachers are dedicated to our students. They hold office hours, then they always make themselves available, even outside of office hours and regular school hours. The transition between high school and college can make or break a student. To prepare for the next stage in their life, Hansberry offered a college class to help them select and apply to colleges of their choice. I am confident that my daughter will be college-ready. Hansberry does a great job of educating our students, but we need funding. All schools need funding. We deserve equitable funding. It is not fair for our students to get less than what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
You're welcome.
As the next speaker approaches the podium, Mr. President, I will call Speaker seventeen, Alex Rosario Moore, Speaker twenty-seven, Beatriz Ponce de Leon, Speaker nineteen, Jerice Brown, Speaker twenty, Gabriel Paez, Speaker twenty-one, Robert Lamont. Please proceed. You can state your name.
Hello. My name is Jason Farrell. I'm a 2017 alumni at Real Clark Math and Science Academy. On August twenty-first, I will be going to college at Trident, studying health science. After two years there, I will be planning on studying kinesiology and sports studies at Easton Illinois. When I first started at Noble, it was very difficult for a couple reasons. It was hard for me to balance things as I focused on trying to find friends, and it was difficult to keep my grades up. Mr. Tollis and my advisor showed me my grades, my freshman and sophomore years, and it was really hard for me to see my grades that low, and it was time for me to make a change because if I keep going down that path, I would be letting people down, including myself. I didn't want to feed in the negative things, so I went to sports. Football and rugby helped me keep my grades up. If I was under a two-point-five, I couldn't play, and my coach pushed me to keep it up, and I did. I'm dyslexic. My teachers helped me work and better myself and make sure I had what I needed. At one point, I was in a class I thought was not too, not challenging enough, and I wanted my teachers to know how I felt, and I was able to speak with them, telling them my point of view and what I needed. That resulted in my needs being met. I moved to a more challenging class, and I was able to advocate for myself and my needs. Noble provided me, where at high school, not only a great education, but supported me and to help me make mistakes and grow and learn from them. I urge you to continue to make fun and fair so that more students like me can be supported in Noble and learn and succeed. Thank you.
Did I hear you say that you struggled with, that you were dyslexic?
Yes.
You did, you did a really good job. I know how difficult that is.
Thank you.
You did a really good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, Nate. Good afternoon to the board. My name is Alexios Rosario Moore. I'm a doctoral candidate at UIC in education policy. One of my research interests is in common enrollment. I'll be speaking about some of the research on common enrollment. I'll be speaking about, uh, some of the research on common enrollment and responding, uh, primarily to the idea that, um, uh, that common enrollment will increase high-quality schools, increase equity of access for all students. Um, I've reviewed the data from, uh, most of the common enrollment programs throughout the country. I was there when they implemented it in New York, working with students. I was there when they implemented it in, uh, New Orleans, when they, uh, implemented it as well, working with students. Um, first of all, uh, there's a tendency for all students, um, uh, to pick schools based on location regardless, uh, so if, uh, regardless of the kind of information they get. Um, so this is gonna tend to increase, um, segregation and stratification. So, uh, young people who live in, um, schools without high-quality neighborhood schools will, uh, continue to attend, um, low-quality neighborhood schools. Uh, in New York, fourteen years after common enrollment was implemented, uh, only seven, uh, only seven percent of, uh, black students attend selective schools, and I know that's a slightly different application process, only eleven percent, uh, attend high-performing neighborhood schools outside of their neighborhood. Uh, the decline in enrollment in neighborhood schools, that's likely with this program, um, is going, paired with per pupil financing, is gonna lead to more school closings. Um, I noticed, uh, in the MOU, uh, with charter schools, uh, that charter schools are gonna be allowed to have a ten percent, uh, enrollment rate over their enrollment rate, and they'll, and so it seems to me that, um, CPS is anticipating, uh, move, uh, from, of students to charter schools. Um, there are alternative systems, enrollment systems, uh, like, um, controlled choice. They use it in San Francisco, they use it in Champaign, Illinois. It incorporates socioeconomic factors, uh, in order to purposely integrate schools.
Mr. Moore.
You can implement that. And then just finally, uh, it's a supply problem. There aren't enough high-quality neighborhood schools. Uh, you won't solve that, uh, through sorting students to different neighborhoods.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Can I respond to Mr. Alexi? Uh, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. I'd love to connect you with Tony Howard, who manages access and enrollment, just to, um, you know, brief you on our process, but also learn from some of the research that you've done. Um, but I do wanna clarify that we don't see common enrollment as a way to improve schools. You improve schools, which I'm sure you obviously know by high-quality instruction inside. Um, but I, we, one of the things I do wanna make sure that the board and the public is aware of is that CPS is lucky that we are going after New York because of some of the things that you pointed out. And I wanna make sure that people understand that in our process, the proximity piece, which largely led to the segregation, is not a part of the algorithm that we will be using. It will be based, students will be, um, able to attend their neighborhood school as their first school of choice, but they would have an option to attend any school in a city, and it won't be zoned, which a lot of the districts that you referenced have kind of a zoned proximity, which we've researched as well, and no lease to stratification. Um, and then the other piece is that we do recognize the impact that it will have, um, on all of our schools, which is why we've worked closely with not just charter schools, but also neighborhood schools. And one of the advantages to this common process is that neighborhood schools, in a lot of cases, have not had the additional resources to market their program by putting everything online, by, um, making the websites more robust. We do give them some support at the district level for marketing their schools and getting, you know, if a parent is going on to look at one of these top-tier schools at the same time, they now have access to look at some schools that they may not have considered before. Um, but I really appreciated some of the comments that you made and would love to get your information and have you sit with our Director of Access and Enrollment, just to make sure we're, you know, we think we're abreast to, to all the research, but I'd love to hear more of your insights around that. So John, behind you, will get your information. I'd love to get you in and just have a discussion.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Beatriz Ponce de Leon.
Hi, good afternoon. Excuse me, I'm the Executive Director of Generationon. We are an organization that was actually co-founded with CPS, the CTU, and the Chicago Community Trust. And our work is to expand equity in education. We've chosen to focus that by revitalizing, working to revitalize neighborhood public high schools. So today, I wanna bring to, um, to the board some questions about Go CPS. We definitely agree that parents and students need a much better way to choose a high school and, um, you know, not go through the, the selection process as it's been the last few years, but we have some concerns because of the potential, as Alexios was discussing, to lead to stratification and greater, um, segregation in our schools. And also because we know that there are many questions left unanswered. It was rolled out rather quickly. There weren't any public hearings or, um, town hall opportunities before the board passed the policy in April, and as the school year was wrapping up, counselors were also, you know, kind of charged with telling students about this process. So in our work with students, parents, and schools, we've learned that there are a lot of unanswered questions and some concerns. And so we've begun to gather that through some surveys and discussions, and we, we are happy to share that with CPS. Couple of the big questions that we have are, what factors are in that algorithm that Ms. Jackson just mentioned? Parents don't know. Is it grades? Is it test scores? Is it proximity? Is it race or things that maybe we shouldn't be looking at? And so we'd like to see that become a public, um, part of a public discussion. What will happen to school enrollment? So we assume that CPS has done some projections or can do projections about how this will roll out. What does that mean for the enrollment at our different types of schools? And specifically at our neighborhood public high schools, which have the fewer resources in terms of marketing communications, attracting people, and also might not have the specialty programs that will be, um, attractive for other students. And then, we know that part of this is.
Ms. Ponce de Leon.
Part of this can lead to school closures next year if enrollment numbers drop. So we really want the board to be aware and inclusive of, um, what those projections might lead to and how we can have a more transparent process around that. Thank you.
Mr. President, our next speaker then is Speaker Nineteen, Jerice Brown, please.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of this board. My name is Jerice Brown Sutton, and I have been a school social worker with CPS for a long time, but I cannot forget my first social work professional day. There was a true sense of urgency as specific social workers were called out of the meeting by their managers. You could tell there was something amiss. These social workers were being called out to deal with what was then an occasional occurrence, but is now becoming everyday event, the shooting death of a student. What was noteworthy then and has become even noteworthy now was the student's name, Yemi Sandifer. In response, every September, I mentally and physically brace myself for what I know will occur, the possible and eventual shooting death of one of my students. That was twenty-three years ago. Violence in Chicago has become quite common, and it is the objective of various social workers and psychologists and counselors to respond in an effective and caring manner. Yet, as these tragedies occur, CPS has yet to come up with a formula that specifically addresses these significant issues. It has been my long-held understanding that services for clinicians were allocated based on the level of poverty in each school and based, therefore, on the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunches. It has come to my attention during my work with CTU as a delegate that there is no specific formula to address these significant issues. What is known is that there has been a significant drop in the number of social workers who have been allocated to perform these services, down from three hundred and seventy to three hundred and twenty-three over the past four years. My question today is, what will CPS do to ensure that students based and living in the south and west sides of the city, that their address, their specific issues are addressed? What formula will we use moving forward that will address the trauma that each of these students experiences every school year? I appreciate your attention and concern to this issue. Thank you.
That was a terrible experience twenty-three years ago. I can see and hearing your voice is still haunts you today.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. President, Speaker Twenty, Gabriel Paez, please.
Good morning, my name is Gabriel Paez. I hope that's a name you're gonna get used to. Uh, I'm a proud delegate of the Chicago Teachers Union and bilingual coordinator of Piccolo School of Excellence, and I just wanna have a quick conversation about democracy and the kind of society that we wanna live in. And I had the pleasure this morning, it was very insightful to see you all have your very quick election as we were sitting here, um, and on this side of the barrier, surrounded by security with cameras on the ceiling. And I'm wondering if that felt democratic to anybody? Because it, it sure didn't feel very democratic to me. And just as a point of order, this body is completely unelected. Not a single CPS teacher, parent, alum got even a single vote, no choice at all. Our voices are literally cut down to two minutes per month. Is this the level of democracy we have in two thousand seventeen in Chicago schools? That is the best we can do? Now, let's settle it. You guys are handpicked. Let that settle in. Everyone say it with me. Handpicked. That's the reality of the situation. Let's not confuse anything here, right? So now that that's been settled, the immediate need for that, we are calling on you, right? We need you guys to support our effort to get those fifty-five million in TIF back to the schools from Navy Pier. We all know it, they did not need that money, and especially not need it more than our students. That money could have run my school of six hundred kids on the west side of Chicago for ten years. Instead of it going to counselors and social workers, uh, when we have students being shot, parents deported, families evicted, homeless students, the mayor and you guys, the board, you are choosing to hand it over very easily to Navy Pier. Bigger bathrooms, taller Ferris wheels, but no soap in the bathrooms and no special ed teachers. No action on actual revenue for the schools. Feed our schools and stop starving us. If we can't feed our schools, then we must not live in a very democratic society because you talk to any parent in the school, any parent on the streets, any parent in the school, any teacher, and they say, feed the schools, stop starving us. At CPS, and, I'm sorry, I need the board to support our effort to get that money back, all of it now.
Mr. Paez, thank you.
We have an immediate need in the schools, and any cuts and pokes on our students are an act of violence and should be treated as such.
Thank you for your comments.
We cannot borrow our way to a solution year after year with no revenue and now paying seventy K per day to JP Morgan Chase just in interest.
Thank you.
That is a shame. Thank you for your time.
As the next speaker approaches the microphone, Mr. President, the next speakers will then be Speaker Twenty Three, Mariela Banderas, followed by Speaker Forty Nine, Graciela Guzman. We'll have Speaker Thirty Four, Coretta Pruitt, Speaker Thirty Five, Dory Collins, and Speaker Thirty Seven, Edward Ford. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Robert Lamont. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to invite you to the National Convention of Veterans for Peace at the Palmer House in Chicago, August ninth through August thirteenth. It's the thirty-second annual convention. The website is veteransforpeace.org. And one of the purposes and one of the missions of the Veterans for Peace is toward increasing public awareness of the costs of war. I've also given you a handout, which is a comment by a former Marine officer in Vietnam on a PBS documentary by Ken Burns, it'll come in September, called The Vietnam War. And the doctor's comments about this documentary says this, "We should not become an agent of propaganda and mythology intended to restore further militarism in war, and we should not contribute to the appropriation of memory and the distortion of truth in behalf of furthering the interests of the corrupt, the greedy, and the powerful. We shouldn't be seduced by one version of history. Therefore, I ask you to remove the uniforms of the junior ROTC from the Chicago Public Schools. We should have education, not militarization," which is the theme of the convention in August. That's your invitation. Hope you enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont.
As, as, as you go back to your seat, um, I completely respect your perspective. Uh, I personally was in the ROTC, I thought it did a lot for me. Uh, like you, I'm a veteran of the Vietnam War. Uh, we have different perspectives, but I do respect what you say.
Go to the convention.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mariela Banderas, please. Please proceed, state your name.
Um, my name is Mirella Banderas. I go by Mimi. I am an education organizer in the northwest side, specifically the Belmont-Cragin area. But before anything, I am a Belmont-Cragin resident, been a proud Belmont-Cragin resident for twenty years, and I'm an, and I represent my community. So I'm gonna read to you a letter that's also in that, um, binder, well, folder that you're getting, and it's actually from Alex, who wasn't able to register on time, but I'm gonna read her letter to you. My name is Alejandra Corral, and I am an, I am an upcoming senior at U of I. I am a proud product of the Chicago Public School System, and most importantly, an eighteen-year-old resident of the Belmont-Cragin community. It is a place I'm proudly called home. The Belmont-Cragin community is a diverse neighborhood, from all different backgrounds, races, ages, socioeconomic groups. Throughout the years, I have not only seen the many positive qualities of the growth of my community, but have also seen the many challenges and setbacks that we have been faced. Unfortunately, following decline manufacturer in, in America, we have seen a coincident decline in factories and warehouses, leading to a fewer working-class jobs, a decline in affordable housing and resources, and a rise in foreclosure and prob, and poverty. As of twenty-ten, the poverty rate in Belmont-Cragin alone is twenty-one percent. The decline in resources are greatly affected the access of high-quality and affordable healthcare. In fact, Belmont-Cragin has fewer primary healthcare providers and specialists per resident than the average Chicago community. This lack of resources only adds to the fact twenty-seven percent of Belmont-Cragin residents lack health insurance, ranking third among Chicago's seventy-seven community areas for the highest number of uninsured residents. The severe lack of mental health resources and education in our community only add to these issues. We res, we currently lack the adequate space and not only cater the, and provide services for these and mental health issues, but we cannot effectively provide the education that our predominantly minority communities need in order to decrease the stigma that still is rampant. By providing these.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we have to proceed with the next speaker so we can get through.
The, there is a, emotion.
Just for the record, I just finished reading everything you're gonna say.
Thank you.
All right. I did read it.
And she's with us, so she'll add more.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, Graciela Guzman, please.
Good afternoon to you all. I'm Graciela, I'm co-chair of the Health Committee for the Quality of Life Planning Process in Belmont-Cragin. I'm also co-chair of the Alone Coalition for Health Access. I stand here with Belmont-Cragin residents and these resilient youth to provide testimony for the vast community support we have for a CCHHS health center being constructed in Belmont-Cragin on CPS property at Hanson Park. Um, this resource would advance the health of Belmont-Cragin's residents. As a part of our planning process, we met with over eight hundred and fifty residents, thirty community-based organizations, and a year-long planning process, and it was really clear through all of that, that health access was a top priority. You've heard the statistics, third in uninsured rates, twelve thousand undocumented, twenty thousand limited English-speaking, um, individuals in Belmont-Cragin. Health access is a top-line priority for us. Um, in addition to that, you've heard the mention of mental health resources. The Northwest Side Housing, um, Center has led an ASAS-based approach to really try to tackle some of those issues that are impacting youth, specifically immigration and local violence. And without the local support of health centers like CCHHS in our neighborhood, we don't have a chance at really tackling those issues that impact these youth today. And the fact of the matter is that not placing a health center in this community would perpetuate the health disparities and inequities that keep Belmont-Cragin sicker and sicker while other communities continue to get better. Um, so I say that to say, thank you to the board for your time and for your attention to the vast data that was compiled, as you can see, was community-led. It's community data, it's publicly accessible. This is not just our perspective, it's the perspective of many Belmont-Cragins that would appreciate your collaboration and cooperation as we seek to co-locate this space in Hanson Park on CPS property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. Our next speaker, please, Speaker Thirty Four, Coretta Pruitt.
Good afternoon and happy Wednesday, and thank you so very much for allowing me to speak today. I like to prelude my statement and support one hundred and ten percent of the New Inglewood High School despite the following occurrence. Last night, I had to call nine-one-one after hearing nine to twelve rounds of gunfire between my house and seeing individuals transported to the hospital. The common thread around the city of Chicago is violence. However, I am looking forward to renewed hope and resilience in a community that, like the phoenix bird, is rising. Beverly Ann Goodman Richardson was a devoted mother, sister, wife, friend, neighbor, and a community activist for over twenty-five years, having served on several organizations within the greater Inglewood community. She was my first parent educator that did home visits as she would take my younger brother, Malcolm and I, with her to other people's houses. She was the first school community representative, SCR, with Chicago Public Schools, first volunteering at Richard J. Oglesby Elementary, Clara Barton Elementary, Amos Alonso Stack Elementary, Lawless Middle High School, excuse me, Lawless Middle School, and Oliver S. Westcott Elementary School. She would have meetings at our house, whether it was a church meeting, a PTA meeting, campaign meeting, or hosting Tupperware or Park Lane jury parties. It is with her spirit now, twenty-two years of my angel, that I, Coretta J. Pruitt, mother of six children, ages fourteen to twenty-one, all products of Chicago Public Schools, would like to commit and devote my time being. and devote my time being at the table as part of the steering committee...
Ms. Pruitt.
... on the next phase of development with the building of the new high school in Inglewood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. 35, Dory Collins.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Dory Collins, and I'm a member of the Inglewood Community Action Council, which led the proposal process for the development of the new high school in Inglewood. The vision of the Inglewood Community Action Council is to transform the quality of education in Inglewood, ensuring all youth have access to quality educational programs, community resources that will enable the successful transition of students from post-secondary to career development and to change the trajectory of their lives. As a result, I am here today to thank first Dr. Jackson and Mr. Forrest Claypool and the board for the vision and decision to announce the development of the new high school in Inglewood. It is a 40-year reinvestment in the community that is well-deserved. What many don't know about the greater Inglewood community is that it serves, it has the largest high school population, and yet, these students travel four to five miles to make other educational choices for not only themselves, but the families for their students. And they're traveling to attend greater than 75 schools across the city. Secondly, Inglewood has the largest population of STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math, and many of those decisions were wanting to be made for a high school placement that was not offered in the community. Aside from Austin, the Austin community having the largest population of students that travel, Inglewood, yet, as I mentioned, is the one that does that. Dynamic and sometimes controversial, Inglewood has always been a vibrant neighborhood that possesses a strong sense of community.
Ms. Collins.
As a member of the CAC, we encourage CPS to continue efforts to build this new high school to offer the academic success and reinvestment in the Inglewood community. Thank you.
I can't resist asking you this. Did I take it from your comments that you believe the CPS and the board actually did something right?
I say you're on a roll to success.
That's good enough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please. Edward Ford. Before he begins, I'd just like to call the next group of speakers, if I may. Speaker 30, Irma Voss, Speaker 38, Tia Taylor, Speaker 31, Rebecca Martinez, 32, Harold Warner, and Speaker 44, Gwendolyn Boyd. Please proceed.
Yes, good afternoon, board members, ladies and gentlemen, people behind me, good afternoon to y'all. I'd like to thank the COO, Denise Little, for her service to Chicago Public School for 38 years. That's a wonderful track record, and your future there, I hope it be as good as it was with Chicago Public School. But with that being said, I'm on the LSC, one of the school, parent advisory council of one of the school, I'm on the LSC advisory board, but I come here as the Inglewood community asset council. Not only a member, but represent the Inglewood. Born and raised in the Inglewood, I got boys that I need to have education because that's our number one priority. But with that being said, the new high school for Inglewood is well-deserved. I thank y'all for looking at Inglewood as a positive light. I saw a lot of things around the Inglewood community, but not education. And a new high school for Inglewood is definitely deserved. We have 42 schools, the network 11, 26 of those schools belong to the Inglewood community, 21 is grammar school, five is high school. Four of the high schools out of five are neighborhood schools that have never been level one in over two decades, you know? So they always been a disagreed service to our children. So our children coming out of the Inglewood community is not getting their fair share of equality as we all talk about here in this room today. You know, our high-level performance school is not there. We have a Limbloom selected enrollment with 5% of our Inglewood community actually attend there. What's me, 95% don't contend there. But all that being said, the dreamers that we heard this morning, I love that because we all were dreamers, and I'm dreaming for the kids in the Inglewood community, as well as the people that lost their life, for being a dreamer, trying to be, make a better place for their self, or their kids, or the surroundings around them. The people in the Inglewood community...
Mr. Ford.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please conclude?
Yes, ma'am. I thank y'all again for looking at the high school and the Inglewood community as number one priority and meet the sort of justice about bringing nobody that's not from the Inglewood to represent this community.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Irma Voss, and this coming school year, I will be teaching 22 years in Chicago Public Schools. I have two beautiful daughters that attend Chicago Public Schools, one at Limbloom and one who will be entering into Kenwood Academy. I'm here today on behalf of the head star 38 teachers that were let go and 12 that were reassigned. Without them, we can't do this work. I'm a preschool teacher. My classroom is a Golden Star classroom. I've been doing it, and I pour my heart into teaching my children. Without them, parents can't receive services that they need. They need services to learn how to write resumes, to look for jobs, and sometimes even have a shelter. So I'm asking, why were these cuts even necessary when they completed an audit this year with a job well done? Why is it that this work would be put on other classroom teachers when you want us to have high-quality early childhood programs? We can't do everything. Either we teach, or we do everything for parents. We can't do it all. We need the resources. We need the help. It's socially-emotional development. We have to pour everything in our soul into our children. I am proud that my children attend Chicago Public Schools, as well as myself. I also did as well. It's my passion. I love what I do. I love my three, four, and five-year-olds. But I also love my colleagues who work hard, who pour their heart and soul into making sure our parents have what they need. Yes, we can continue to work hard and make sure they have the things that they need, but we need help, we need resources. So I'm asking, was it really necessary to re-move Navy Pier?
Ms. Voss, can you please conclude?
I'm just asking. Please give back so we can continue to make lifelong learners in early childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Tia Taylor, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, 31, Rebecca Martinez, please.
Rebecca Martinez with the Chicago Teachers Union. Chicago is a city of neighborhoods, 77 of them. They have identities, histories, and many of its residents have pride. My neighborhood is Little Village. I live two blocks from Farragut High School, one of the two community high schools in Little Village. Under this year's underfunded budget, Farragut High School is losing close to $1 million. Not only are students in my community, like many others, dealing with violence, unemployment, and other ills that you've heard of today, but also detentions and deportations. Now they also have to deal with more cuts to an already unstable severely cut budget. How is Farragut supposed to provide high-quality education with $1 million less? In April, this board approved the change to the high school application for next year. It's streamlined the process, but it doesn't include the most coveted schools that are the hardest to get into, the selective enrollment schools. Those are still, those applications are still hard to navigate. I ask you, how is Farragut expected to be a real choice for students and parents when their budgets continue to get cut? That's every community neighborhood school that continues to get cut. How are they going to be, how are they going to survive this application process? This streamlined application process sets up our neighborhood schools on a path to closure. This decision was done in typical CPS fashion, top-down, without any community engagement, without transparency, and equity that you talk about so often and frequently is simply a talking point for you. It doesn't have to be this way. You can do something about it.
Ms. Martinez.
However, it does require courage. You can demand that the mayor declare a Tiff surplus and bring money back into our schools.
Ms. Martinez, can you please conclude?
You can ask the mayor to reinstate the corporate head tax. You can also demand that the mayor, who appoints you...
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
... return the $55 million that were laundered to Navy Pier. You cried earlier for Denise Little.
Ms. Martinez, thank you.
Will you cry for the students that continue to get their budgets slashed and lose their teachers, lose their support services? Will you cry for them? This board needs to take some action and stop being a rubber-stamp board. But I won't even wait for an answer because I won't get one. And the answer...
Ms. Martinez, thank you.
The words mean nothing. You need to go and get money from the mayor.
Our next speaker, please. As the next speakers approach the podium, Mr. President, we will then have Speaker 39, Robert Mizakowski, Speaker 41, Marlena Ceballos, Speaker 42, Vanessa Folly. Please state your name.
I am Harold Warner. I am a proud member of the DuSable Alumni Coalition for Action. As you've heard from other members of our organization, we are asking you to approve the consolidation of the two schools that currently reside in the historic DuSable Building into a single, vibrant, and culturally relevant center of education under the historic name DuSable High School. We're advocating for combining the common resources in order to achieve greater efficiencies and focus. We strongly believe that a greater focus on academic excellence, cultural relevance, and citizenship led by a visionary principal with highly committed, competent, and motivated staff and active support from the community and the alumni will lead and yield to outstanding citizens who are ready to succeed in the world. What's our vision? Number one, we'd like to see the historic name, DuSable High School, DuSable restored to the front of the school name, and we believe we receive the commitment for that to happen this fall. We envision a school that restores and retains its history and linkage to the city of Chicago. We envision a school that provides a symbolic, real linkage to the legacy of high achievement from DuSable, yielding such outstanding graduates as the late Mayor Harold Washington, Nat King Cole, Justice William Cousins, Dr. Timmy Black, Dr. Grace Dawson, Senator Matty Hunter, and many others, including musicians, scientists, educators, and artists. We believe this school will made up, yielding academically and culturally inspired young men and women. We think the curriculum should be strong and challenging and includes the appropriate core subjects, but also the specializations that they currently have needs to be enhanced. We believe there should be African-American history with emphasis on the city of Chicago...
Mr. Warner, can you please conclude?
I will. In summary, we believe civics should be involved with linkages and chances to get involved in government, and finally, we believe that these students will go out and make a difference in the world.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, please. Gwendolyn Boyd.
Good afternoon. My name is Gwendolyn Boyd, and I am an alumnus of John Baptiste Pointe du Sable High School and a lifetime member of the DuSable High School Coalition for Action. I want to thank you for this opportunity of allowing me to speak to you on the consolidation of One DuSable High School. The DuSable High School campus, located at 4934 South Wabash, received landmark status four years ago, thanks to the combined efforts of Alderman Pat Dow and the DuSable High School Coalition for Action. This monumental achievement was made possible because of people working in unity to achieve a common goal for the greater good. Unity that the coalition wants to see continue through the consolidation of one school under the name of DuSable High School. The DuSable High School Coalition for Action believes that consolidating to one school will be fiscally responsible, unify the student population, and maintain a history that should never be forgotten, while still allowing for the focus on curriculum courses and specialty subject matters. Fiscal responsibility, budgeting for one leadership team, a principal, assistant principal, one staff. Unifying of the student population, ending the decisiveness between the student population of the two schools operating within the same building. Students will be able to interact with a wider range of students, preparing them to better fit into college life. History, a part of the curriculum would or could include a mini-course on John Baptiste Pointe du Sable and his contribution to the city of Chicago. The curriculum will still cover core courses and enable students to take specialty courses, i.e. medical, jazz, art in particular. We are asking that you support our efforts to make DuSable High School One School again. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker 41, Marlena Ceballos.
Good afternoon, unelected school board. And let me make a correction, my name is Marlena Ceballos. Ceballos are onions. I am a CPS product of this system, and it's sad to say that I cry so many times as I worry of the future of our education for the students that are current and future products of this system that is so unjust. I am here to speak about the strategic systematic disinvestment in our neighborhood schools and how it directly and negatively affects the lives of our students of color. Sometimes we are speaking about life or death in the lives of our students. This past year, I had a girl that came to me during her recess crying because she's seen ICE go into her house and rip away her uncle from her family as they were celebrating. And then another student comes to me and tells me the story of how he has scars on his arms because he attempted suicide last year. Yet our schools do not have enough social workers, we do not have enough counselors, we do not have enough therapists to provide these students with the services that they truly need to provide a just and equitable, equitable education that you continue to say. So I ask you, how do you sleep at night? Where are your values? Where are your values, you people of color on this board? When our history has shown us that we continue to struggle? Where are your values? How will you sleep at night? I hope my words resonate in your minds all night because I'm tired of fighting. We need sanctuary schools. Yes, we have sanctuary schools, right? You think just because you make a statement saying that we have sanctuary schools that it's truly a sanctuary school? I don't think so. There's been a sanctuary schools resolution since December that was sent to you, and it has yet to move. We need clear action steps to show the students and families of Chicago that you stand in solidarity with them.
Ms. Ceballos.
I'm not done.
Ms. Ceballos.
My people need to hear me. I am not done. We need this in our schools. We need you to stand in solidarity. We need to eliminate the gang database, which is unjust for our students. There's no clear process on what is going on, and if ICE gets to come, they can deport our kids. We need clear action statements. The Justice Department yesterday released a statement saying that if schools or cities do not get in collaboration with them and work in collaboration with them, that they're going to decrease funding for law enforcement in our schools, in our, I'm sorry, in our police department. Will you take a stand against Trump? Will you tell him that we need sanctuary schools? Are you going to sleep at night? Are you going to think about, imagine if you thinking about your kids, having to leave your kids?
Ms. Ceballos, thank you.
I'm not done.
Our next speaker, please.
The city continues to target our schools.
Ms. Ceballos, we have to continue.
Add our advocates, and God forbid us, an advocate get up like Sarah Chambers or Melissa Holmes and speak out against the injustice in the system that get fired. I ask you that you give the students their teachers back.
Ms. Ceballos, thank you.
And their social worker. And let Sarah teach, and let Melissa go back to her students. It's up to you. You can make the final decision. You can be a leader in this educational movement, and you can stand in solidarity with us. But it's your choice.
I have handed you all emails that I have been going back and forth with my child's school, and the one that you have in front of you right now is one that no one has responded to. This is my fifth time here. I am still continuing to fight for my daughter to get the services she deserves. This...
This fight began in May 2016. CPS cured her of autism, then uncured her of autism, to being denied of any services despite having an IEP for three years during pre-K, to be given a 504 that is like an IEP without goals and benchmarks, and not addressing her slow processing or lack of being able to focus due to her anxiety and ADD, to have Ms. Keenan come and offer to help and use the same exact lip service she has given to every single special ed parent who has been here. The atmosphere at Burley is one where parents come up to me and tell me that my child should not be at Burley because she is taking away money from the general ed to be intimidated by the principal. How dare they? How dare I get bullied by a parent for my child having special needs? I am not the only parent that is being intimidated by Burley. They refuse to do mediation. They refuse to resolve issues that are in the best interest of the students and for the school as a whole. Gen ed students need special ed students. To be pushed out of by a school that my children have attended for eight years says a lot about the values of Burley. I do not have the resources to hire an attorney to fight all you people. My daughter continues to self-harm. She has panic attacks where she says that she's dying. She is six years old.
Ms. Folly.
She, no. She is becoming so aggressive that I have to restrain her. These are the psychological ramifications and the toll that my family is facing due to CPS and Burley not providing the supports that my child needs. This is taking an emotional and financial toll on all of my family to have people like Catherine Ellis and Pat Baccirelli telling me that if my family is unhappy with the services, to file due process and sue. I would rather spend that time, that energy, and that financial resources supporting my child to give her what she needs. For a school to have a parent lecture on transgender, but yet will not have a lecture on diverse learners? That says a lot about the priorities of Burley. Oh, yeah, and the transgender family, they no longer go to the school. There are many students who have minor learning difficulties that need services, but not to the extent of an IEP, yet they have one. Oh, is this because these are students that are going into third and seventh grade? Because those are big testing years. Instead, $55 million in TIF is used for the tourist trap of Navy Pier for a food court. Yet special ed is suffering from your cuts. We need special ed teachers like Sarah Chambers. We need therapists. We need autism itinerates back.
Ms. Folly.
We need to do more for our children. They do not need to die anymore because of your incapabilities. You want solutions? Educate parents on diverse learners. Keep principals doing their job and not IEP and 504 meetings. We need an advisory board. We need parent liaisons. We need all of these things that were there four years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Folly. We have to proceed with the next speaker.
Stop the data, stop the paperwork, and start listening to the parents.
Our next speaker, please. Sachai Jasper, followed by Speaker 48, Philip Scopes.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Sachai Alvarez Jasper. I want to address equity through the lens of access. My daughter, Riley Sachai Jasper, who is black and brown, she's black and Latina, Honduran and Puerto Rican to be exact, not Mexican. She attends NTA through the Options for Knowledge Program. She's one of 258 students. Riley will be a first grader next year, and she's in one of the classes that Dr. Jackson was talking about that's not diverse. She's in one of those classes. She's not in the RGC. Do we really have an Options for Knowledge Program if we take away the options? I want to share with you a little bit about myself and Riley. I am a product of CPS. I was born and raised in Humboldt Park. I went to my neighborhood high school. I did not go to my neighborhood, I'm sorry, I went to my neighborhood elementary school, not my neighborhood high school. I was fortunate enough to get into Whitney Young, and I went to Whitney Young. My spouse also is a product of CPS. He went to his neighborhood elementary school and was able to go to Kenwood Academy. So we are both products of CPS. We were also employees of CPS. I worked for CPS for eight years, worked, past tense, I no longer work for CPS, and he worked for CPS for 20 years as a teacher, AP, and principal. We were expected to provide a high-quality education for others, but the irony in that is that we don't have access to that high-quality education. We are Southsiders, and so in our neighborhood, there are no viable options. In our neighborhood, it is difficult for our child and other people in the neighborhood to get that high-quality education. My daughter was forced to attend private school. We had her in private school as we waited since she had a late December birthday, and also the process is daunting, to say the least. I didn't know about the Options for Knowledge Program. She got in, and now that program is being denied. And so my question is, there are too many people that are working for a system that doesn't work for them. Where's the access and equity when you take away the options? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jasper. Our next speaker, please. Philip Scopes, last call. Moving on to the next speakers, we'll have Speaker number 53, please. Charlotte Sanders, followed by Speaker 54, Margia Genault; Speaker 55, Angela Butler; 59, Vera Kothari; and Speaker 60, Lydia Young. Last call for Charlotte Sanders. Last call for Margia Genault. Last call for Angela Butler. Ms. Butler, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. How's everybody? I first just want to clear the air. It's been a lot of negative stuff, and I just want to make a little. I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. We all have to give them a sense of pride. I had to get that out because in the midst of all the negativity, we kind of forget what this is really about. You know, this is about the children, and this is about Chicago's thing, putting America, putting Chicago to work. And in order to put Chicago to work, everybody has to have a fair and equal opportunity at education because we can't create an environment where they can get the proper jobs to be able to work. So me personally, I've been having a situation for the past three or four years, and I'm finally getting here to this point. My children, my name is Angela Butler. My children attend Skinner West Elementary, and my special education son attends debt school. They've been separated as a result of us being in a temporary situation, living situation per my divorce. They were homeschool first, and I decided to put them into a public school setting. And since then, we've had a lot of prejudice and discrimination, and they've been separated in two separate schools. My son just graduated out of eighth grade. He has autism, but he was not given, I guess, the same opportunities as other children. And I see the difference from the separation. So we've been going through a heck of a lot trying to see who to reach to tell our story to because grants have been being applied for on behalf of my family, but I don't know where that funding is going. We've been discriminated because we were in a homeless situation, bus cars, transportation, all of this has been being stolen from us.
Ms. Butler, can you please conclude?
Yes, so my thing is, I'm trying to reach someone that can help our family situation. We have documentation and all of that, yet every time I come up here to the board, we're just being ignored. I've been coming three and four years. I have copies with stamps on them. No one is responding to any of my requests, any of my complaints, due process, all of that. It's just being kicked out, and every time I come up here, it appears as though me as a parent, like I'm being blackballed soon as they hear my name, or soon as I sent the whole packet with Forest Claypool's name on it as instructed through ISB. No response. I send it almost every school year, so there's nothing being done. My daughter has developed anxiety as a result of being in Skinner West. They're very segregated, and I was a proud parent once she was enrolled, but because of our situation, there was no privacy. Everything was just thrown out of the water, and we were just treated as if we were actually like coming from the streets. The thing about people in our situation, what I'm looking for is transparency as far as.
Let me suggest something. I understand. Dr. Jackson, is there someone that we can have a talk?
I was going to ask, you haven't had an opportunity to speak to anyone, perhaps. John, if we can get her connected with Zaporah Skinner, is an ISP school, so Zaporah Hightower manages them, so we can have Zaporah.
John, make sure she has some contact. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, and just one more issue. I went to Ms. Clark with it. My son also complained of sexual assault there, and last school year, there has been no response. No one is.
Okay. Our security officer is right behind you. JD, thank you very much.
Thank you. You have.
Thank you. And our next speaker, Vera Kothari, last call. And then the next speaker. Thank you. Our last speaker, Mr. President, Speaker 60, Lydia Young.
Hi, everyone. So thank you for allowing me to have my voice heard today. I really appreciate that. Hi, everybody who stayed. I actually moved to Chicago 10 years ago to study policy, educational policies. Moving from Kansas, learning about the inequities in Chicago, I wanted to be here. I wanted to make change. I was a teacher, been a counselor. I currently work in nonprofit where I'm in 15 different schools across the city, so I'm in it. I'm not a parent of an NTA student, nor do I live in that community, but I'm here because I believe in equity. I do not agree with the displacement of students from NTA, and I find that this policy or this decision seems to be one that lies right in the intersection of reality and perception, and it is perceived as a policy from way back in the day where it feels like we don't care about black and brown kids. We continue as a system to send implicit messages that we don't care about certain kids, and that is the perception, which is the reality of many. I charge CPS and this system to start thinking about that. Do we value, why don't we think about alternatives and put those resources back in those schools that exist? Our kids are extraordinary. Those kids in Tilden, those kids in Phillips, those kids in Dunbar, why don't we put money back in those schools? I don't understand it. We continue to tell our kids that we don't care about them. We continue to listen. This reinforces a white superiority, a white dominant ideology, and I feel like it is wrong. And I'm here to speak on that and to help to support those young people who may not have a voice, those parents who feel like they don't have a voice. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you all continue to think about this decision and the messages that you are telling our young people over and over and over again. Thank you.
What organization did you say you represented?
Can I say? Chicagoans for Equity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Board members, are there any follow-up comments?
I have two quick questions. One, Mr. Gray earlier, the former principal at Hamilton, had referenced that principals were given $100,000 for sped teachers, 50 for sped paraprofessionals, but that our own public data said that that was insufficient for to cover sped costs, so I kind of want to know where those rates came from, and if a principal or a school has an issue like this, what are the options for them?
Okay, are you getting ready to respond? Go ahead.
Hi, Ron Denard, SVP of Finance. So the numbers that you hear are the average dollar cost that we give to schools. We give salary adjustments in all school budgets so that if schools choose to hire teachers or have teachers that are above our average, then they have the salary adjustments. And if they choose to hire teachers that are below, they actually get to keep that money and use it within their budget. So we put it all in one line called salary adjustments because we don't know when they finish their budgets, what teachers they're hiring, what teachers that are staying. So we give them a salary adjustment in their budgets.
And that applies to sped, too?
Yes.
Does that answer your questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any others?
I just want to say that as a former retired teacher, counselor, principal, chief officer, I'm proud to serve on the board with President Clark and Jaime, and I'm delighted that they accepted their positions. I think I can say during the 40 years I served in CPS and seen many of these board meetings, we're in a very challenging and difficult time with lots of issues to each issue, and the way that you manage it makes us proud. Proud to serve.
I'm not going to cry, but I smile. Okay, seeing that there are no other questions, we will now move into closed session.
Dr. Heinz, excuse me.
Oh. I'm in a hurry.
I have.
Go ahead. Make the motion first.
I move for the passage of motion 17-0726-M01 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Five A's, zero Nays.
We're now going to closed session. The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with closed session items from the General Counsel, and I will begin with continued counsel retentions. These items do require a vote, and we have the first report, the law firm Neil and Leroy LLC; second report, the law firm Jackson Lewis PC; third report, the law firm Miller Canfield; and the fourth report, the law firm Hill Law Offices. Mr. President, these items do require a vote. We need a motion, Mr. President.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark, five A's, zero Nays. I will continue with settlements and awards, and these items do require a vote.
I don't, I thought you heard me say yes, but I did say yes.
Yes. Five A's, zero Nays. I have that recorded, Mr. President. Thank you. I'll proceed with settlements and awards. These items do require a vote. The first report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Andy Dew, case number 14WC035638. The second report, workers' compensation payment for lump sum settlement for Nancy Cologne, case number 97WC062077. The third report, unfair label practice and grievance settlement, authorized payment of settlement for service employees International Union Local 73. And the fourth report, approved settlement of Sharon Kimble, case, Sharon Kimble case numbers 2010CH28423 and 2015CH18650. The fifth report is approved settlement of Robert Jed grievance, and the sixth report, approved payment of Deborah Sukannick grievance award. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with law personnel matters. These items do require a vote. The first report, transfer and appoint senior assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Anna R. Slater, and the second report, appoint assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Christina Jeremus. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with a closed session item from the First Deputy General Counsel for new counsel retention. This item does require a vote, and it's counsel retention for the law firm of McDermott Will and Emory LLP. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Dr. Heinz.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. Five A's, zero Nays. I will continue with items from the Chief Executive Officer. These items do require a vote, and I'll proceed with the principal contract new ALSC for Amy O'Connor, contract principal at Barbara Vic. We have one warning resolution for Salvatore Canela, principal George B. Swift Elementary Specialty School, and we have one non-tuition resident matter. Adopt finding that pupils are non-residents of the city of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, and I'll continue with one item from the board, and this item does require a vote. Resolution. Resolution approving the chief executive office's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on July 21st, 2017, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers, I'm sorry, to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board of 4-1 and 105ILCS5/34-84. His recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and he also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, and I believe Member Rivera has a motion, please.
I move that pursuant to Section 2.06D of the Open Meetings Act, board members have reviewed the redacted portions of closed session minutes previously open for public inspection for the period of July 1995 through June 2015. These minutes with noted redactions were open to the public by the board at various times from January 2012 to January 2017. The board finds that the need for confidentiality continues to exist for the redacted portions of these minutes, which portions will not be available for public inspection. Upon adoption of this motion, all existing closed session minutes from July 1995 through June 2015 will be available for public inspection with the continuing redactions noted.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, and I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that pursuant to Section 2.06D of the Open Meetings Act, the board members have reviewed closed session minutes for the period beginning July 2015 through December 2015. The board members have determined that the need for confidentiality does not exist as to those minutes except as indicated in the redacted portions. Minutes were redacted for the following: A, privileged attorney-client communications; B, information subject to privacy or confidentiality protections in state or federal law; and C, information where the board determines it necessary to protect the public interest or the privacy of an individual. The board finds that the need for confidentiality as to the redacted material remains. Upon adoption of this motion, all closed session minutes from July 2015 through December 2015 with noted redactions will be available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Vice President, I'm sorry, Member Ward and President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, and I believe that Member Dr. Heinz has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of June 28, 2017. Board members have reviewed these minutes along with previously approved minutes of closed sessions from January 2016 through May 2017 in accordance with Section 2.06D of the Open Meetings Act. Following this review, board members have determined that the need for confidentiality exists as to all closed session minutes from January 2016 through June 2017, and therefore, these minutes will not be available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, and I believe Member Ward has a motion, please.
Section 2.06C of the Open Meetings Act permits the destruction of audio recordings of closed session meetings no less than 18 months after the completion of a meeting if the board has, one, approved the minutes of the closed meeting, and, two, approves the destruction. The board's closed session meetings from July 2015 until December 2015 occurred more than 18 months ago, and the board secretary maintains board-approved confidential minutes of all such closed sessions. I move that the audio recordings of the board's closed session meetings from July 2015 until December 2015, as itemized on the attached appendix A, be authorized for destruction in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's, and I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that the record of proceedings of the board meeting of June 28, 2017 prepared by the board secretary be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Educational website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Rivera?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Five I's, zero N's. Mr. President, I will now continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with resolutions and one policy. These items do require a vote. We have RS 1, 2, 3, and 4. Mr. President, I will continue with the policy, and that's PO 1, and these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board member, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms.
Stella, before you go on, did we do EB 1?
One second, let me check that for you. So, Mr. President, as I was noting, we'll continue with the public agenda items, and I will only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. I will begin with the resolutions and the one policy. So, we have RS 1, 2, 3, and 4. Continuing with the policy, we have PO 1, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will now continue with one communication, and this item does not require a vote. It's CO 1. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, August 23, 2017, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m., and public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600. For the August 23, 2017 board meeting, advanced registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, August 21 at 10:30 a.m., and will close on Tuesday, August 22 at 5 p.m. Or until all slots are filled, and you could advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers. Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote, and I will proceed with EX 1, EX 2, and on EX 3, I would like to note for the record that EX 3 was drafted on agenda, and the final will be included in the agenda of action. And I would also like to note an abstention for President Clark on EX 3. I will continue with EX 4. We then have EX 5, and I would like to note for the record that EX 5 has been revised, and the final will be included in the action. And there was just a minor correction on the approved vendor list for vendors number 2 and vendors number 11 for their vendor name on EX 5. We then have PR 1 and PR 2, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with the next item as PR 3, and I would like to note that PR 3 was drafted on agenda, and the final will be included in the action as well. I would also like to note that there will be three separate votes for this item, and the first vote will be to authorize the vendors on the attachments for number, vendor numbers 1 through 17, 19 through 28, 30 through 42, and 44 through 56. And, Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the second vote will be to authorize vendor number 18. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for President Clark on vendor 18. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable